Madam City Clerk, I forgot to ask, did you have any email commentary that came in during the relevant time on item number two?
No, Mayor.
Okay. So, let's go back up to council before we kick off our follow-ups and commentary. I do want to help to frame this a bit. I think some of the questions and comments that were presented before we went to public comment, they were very legitimate, good ones. One had to do with how what we're doing is tracking with our general plan. Another had to do with how are we going to take into account work done on an item already? And, you know, I do take both of those questions under good advisement, especially for the first one in the context of the fact that we do have two council members that really didn't have input, right, with regard to how we're bucketizing, if you will, the five basic categories. And so, I do want to give staff an opportunity to talk about how these items are consistent with the general plan, while at the same time, perhaps address the point of whether the work plan is something that necessarily follows the framework of the mission described in the general plan and other city-related missions or charters. My understanding of how we construct our work plan is that it's a general annual check-in into what we're working on as a council, and now bringing into the consideration a cohesive plan with our commissions and audit committee. Now, with the other item, how do we take into account work done on an item already? I think that's a very legitimate point. It doesn't really get reflected in the material that we have so far. And so, maybe that's something to consider with regard to if we're prioritizing, asking staff with additional direction to take that into account as they're going in and following up. And perhaps at this point, Madam City Manager, it would be useful to put up your workflow chart as to where we stand in the process. The slide where you had, "This is where you are," at the very top, to remind people that we are contemplating another check-in prior to finalization of the work plan, but just to kind of give us a framework of where we're at in the overall process. So, Katie, thank you for sharing your screen. And so, if you'll look at your screen here, you'll see that here we are in the strategic planning session number one in March. We'll have a city council meeting in April, two in fact, one next week and another in three weeks, where we're looking to, you know, adopt council goals of change. That's an opportunity for us to discuss and modify. And then, of course, there is the special city council meeting talking about our second strategic planning session, where we're reviewing the proposed work plan. And then, that ultimately, I think, is going to go into yet another city council meeting in the month of May, where we'll be adopting. So, it looks to me like there are at least another three points where we could be observing in the process and giving input as to what might modify our stated priorities at this initial point. So, if any staff would like to speak to those points as we're kind of initializing our first dip into the discussion, I'd be happy to open it up to staff members to give their input and feedback. I don't think that we're ripe at this point for a motion, frankly, to start discussing, because we really don't have any kind of input points. And, you know, frankly, we don't have an agreed-upon process at this point as to how we're going to go about identifying, you know, various priorities. So, I would like to hear staff's, you know, feedback based upon where we stand at this point within this evening's meeting.
Yeah, so, we are still here, and even after, even if we get through talking about all the 59 light items, you're still going to be here getting ready to go into April. With regard to Councilmember Moore's discussion about the general plan and kind of what's embodied inside there as the values and goals, they are incorporated into the quality of life goal. However, because we've received that input, by the time we get to the April timeframe, we'll attempt to reflect her desire in terms of referring to the general plan. And what I'm thinking of is there are, perhaps underneath the, well, I'm not going to say just yet, because we'll figure out how to do that come the April feedback loop for that. Or we would move past this and maybe into this next blue box, which is April/May. So, that's kind of an integrated piece. With regards to the amount of work that's been completed on some of the items, I would propose the following. If we start with, say, for example, Attachment A, page one, and we incorporate Councilmember Willie's desire to kind of just talk, go page by page, maybe Councilmember Moore use this as an example from the planning commission. And if there are questions about a certain item, then staff can help address that for council. And then, in that process, maybe we can figure out, because you have the same people here who can then say, "How much work has been completed on any which item?" And maybe we can address it that way. I don't know if that maybe...
Okay. I think that sounds pretty agreeable. What we would achieve, the aim of trying to get an idea of how much work has been done on each of these items. And so, with regard to going point by point, I think, in the interest of efficiency, why don't we take each of these tabs? You know, and again, under advisement that, you know, these aren't necessarily five categories that all five of us have really been invested in and made a determination as to whether this is really an appropriate set of labels and way of grouping our various work plan items. So, if you keep an open mind, staff, with regard to keeping that under advisement, you know, perhaps, you know, in our next iteration of the April/May meeting, when we have session number two for this, we might be seeing a, you know, kind of a revised...
Adjustments.
Yeah, set of labels and perhaps even additional items that might be identified tonight. So, let me, and I'm looking at an Excel spreadsheet on my own computer, so I don't... So, are there objections to going through on each of these tabs and, you know, with a brief summary of each of the items, of course? But we won't stop too far on each one of the items for, you know, kind of a full-fledged description unless there are questions from council. Is that something that works? And I see Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Paul. I was wondering, because I am looking at the February 18th, 2020 agenda and looking at the council goals which were there, I was wondering if any of the three council members who participated in that discussion, because I see no alteration in the item. It seems as though, maybe it was late in the evening, that there wasn't a lot of discussion about this. And do the council members themselves recall this item and how it, and whether or not there was some connection with the general plan? What's interesting about this, which we're not seeing here, is that the council goals were adopted in a separate session, and it doesn't appear that you were required to look at the goals and then add on the issue of the work plan prioritization at the same time, which is what we're doing here. And like I was saying previously, that I think we should have done that same process and then moving forward for next year, that we look at the council goals as a separate agenda item. And then, because you could end up with some lengthy discussion about something, and then that the next meeting, you would work on the work plan after everyone had it primed in their minds, you know, this is, we have these priorities. Right now, we have issues with, you know, people wanting to help with small businesses in Cupertino. We lost the small target. And we have housing issues. We've got the coming housing element. We have all these things, and it would be great, in my mind, if we had our, you know, minds primed with what we've got in our goals, and then we move on to the next session where we're doing this prioritization after we've reiterated, "This is what we're about, and now we're going to go and do our prioritization." So, for me, I think you had it a little bit better organized, but perhaps not enough discussion last time. And now, anyway, so if any of the council members would like to share what that discussion was like, characterize it.
Yeah, I'm not really sure if Councilmember Willie and Vice Mayor Chow would have a distinct recollection of February 18th, 2020. You know, for me, nothing comes immediately to mind. I mean, we do get a rather, you know, significant volume of items and meetings that, you know, go on top of our regular activities. So, I can't, sitting here, connect what happened a year and two months ago with, you know, the workflow process compared to what we're looking at here. But what I can say is that we appear to be having a check-in on the goals between this study session and the second study session with regard to the work plan items. So, I mean, I can see within the framework we've already, you know, identified here through staff, that if we wanted to change the goals, it looks like there's an item in between. Maybe I'm reading the flowchart incorrectly, but to me, it looks like we do have a number of work plan items here. We could add to it, we could, you know, take away. And then, there is another check-in between now and April/May, when we have the second session that we have, you know, like this one here. So, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, I mean, we do have a goals item, right, on an upcoming agenda?
Yes, yes. And typically, what happens is goal-setting happens, and then a discussion right in the same session follows. And if you'll remember, if you remember back to the February 2020 discussion, I had drafted some, because each of the council members were expressing to me what they were thinking. So, I drafted some, and then what council did is the statements or description or objective underneath those stated goals were drafted by council before adoption last year. And so, and then we went forward with the work program. And the design of the goals were really not, because the projects you can see are not always accomplishable in one year, for example, you know, development projects or even a park project, not accomplishable necessarily in one year. You tend to phase them and then put the next phase of the project in the following work program.
Right.
So, that's kind of why I say those goals theoretically endure for, say, two to five years, three to five years, somewhere in there, but can always be, you know, adjusted in the annual check-in. Does that kind of address or answer the question? That's what I recall from that session.
Yeah, I mean, as you're talking about a process, I can remember, you know, pieces of how the goals were set, you know, and I remember there was a bit of pushback, right, with your initial characterizations, you know, "Are these necessary goals?" And we kind of went with the idea of, "Well, let's try these goals," you know, "See how..." It's similar to the, you know, thoughts I was setting forward at the initiation of this meeting, which was to say, you know, "This is a relatively new process in consolidating all the various commissions through, you know, our staff contacts and their desired work plan items over the course of the next fiscal year. So, let's try it out and see, you know, what could get adjusted." And so, thinking about it that way, it seems very legitimate. What Councilmore is bringing up, which is that we should be examining the goals in addition to the various items that we place on the work plan, and it does seem that we have that opportunity. Now, when you place that in the box between the two work plan sessions, that's identified as April, are we looking, my understanding, we're not looking at next week, right? We're probably looking at April 20th?
No, it's probably, probably not April 20th either. Maybe some special meeting, if you recall, last year, the work program took a couple of meetings, then we had another one on CIP, and then we had...
Oh, no. Okay, so if you look at the chart, if you look at the work chart, right, I mean, you've got...
Yeah, we're out of order. We're out of order because it's just a weird year.
Okay, so are you saying that we won't have a goals-setting session between the two work plan items? Because it seems like if we're not really setting goals on April 20th, or maybe April 13th or that week, you know, between the regular council meetings, then we're not necessarily going to have an opportunity to set goals before we go to the second work plan session. So...
So, this evening is for reviewing the council goals. So, this is kind of that opportunity to adjust them if needed. And that box in the middle that you're referring to, it would likely go on a city council meeting, but it wouldn't be a bulky discussion, assuming we kind of hashed out what you wanted the goals to be here, and then we would bring it for a formal adoption.
Now, let's not conflate the idea of goals versus work plan items. So, when I use the word "goals," I'm talking about your five basic categories of public engagement.
Correct.
Sustainability, transportation, housing, and quality of life. So, are you saying that we're looking at potentially modifying those goals tonight in addition to prioritizing the various items on the work plan? Are you saying that most...
Right, so when we had reviewing the goals on the kind of list of steps we're taking this evening, that is one of them. So, we can definitely look into changing any of the goals if you guys would like to.
Okay, I see. All right. Well, that's fair enough. Why don't we, why don't we go through, you know, in terms of process here, since we are looking at the goals, let's do essentially around robin to get a sense of where council would like to potentially modify these five high-level goals of public engagement, and, you know, again, sustainability, transportation, housing, and quality of life. So, we can get an initial sense of it before we start going through individual work plan items. Would anyone like to go initially? Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised.
All right. So, my suggestion was that we look at what's in the general plan, the 12 items, and I think that they can be somewhat grouped down from the 12, but ideally, ideally, this should have been done like it was done previously. So, last year, you had your goals as an agenda item on February 18th, and then you had, and it sounds as though you had more than one study session on the work plan items, but that then happened February 24th. So, for process, okay, so it looks like we're a bit out of order then, you know, and I know that we have people online, and they want to hear how things are going to be ordered up, and they're, you know, chomping at the bit for us to put things in order because they're interested in particular items. However, we do have a list of guiding principles which should be then grouped and have our tables reflecting this, so that next time it's a little, makes more logical sense to us when we're going through. And then, and I know a member of the public mentioned having things numbered, I certainly agree with that. So, I would say, you know, pull up the general plan, page 12 of 534, and page 13, take a look, and break those items down. And some of them, when you look at public, when you look at improved connectivity, that also falls under enhanced mobility. So, there are three and four. You've got a transportation element, which you would call your mobility. Balanced community, that's a principle of equity. But here, they're talking about housing choices. So, we, some of these things will work with what we have, but it needs to be, in my opinion, integrated that way. And had we had a proper work program goal-setting session, I would have wanted a study, or a staff report that was taking these items and then saying, you know, "This is how things have been categorized now. This is where these items fit." Interesting, we've got item eight, embrace diversity. Celebrate Cupertino's diversity by offering a range of housing, shopping, and community programs that meets the needs of a full spectrum of the community while ensuring equal opportunities for all residents and workers, regardless of age, cultural, or physical differences. Have those guiding principles been integrated here? We've got quality of life doesn't appear to address this as elegantly as it is in the general plan. So, I would offer, take a look and see how we could re-categorize things.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Our next comment is from Vice Mayor Chow.
So, my recollection from last year, it was the first time we had goals. So, it was pretty new, and I view it almost as a way of categorizing the list of items that of interest to the council at that time. And we didn't say, "Let's decide the goals," and then they come out, we come up with items for each goal. That wasn't quite the process. Because in the past, the council never had goals. We just had a list of items, we prioritized items. And I wouldn't say we are out of order this year, because last year was just the first time we are doing that. And there were meetings added after we have done that, and we feel we didn't have enough discussion, we added some. So, comparing with last year is not really an apple-to-apple comparison. I think we are trying to polish the process every year. So, this year, I think that we're trying to improve that again, yet again. So, it may not completely match last year, that's fine. It's just, we are trying to improve the process. So, maybe we shouldn't have to compare. And as to whether we should now try to look at the general plan goals and then decide the items, I think it's a bit too late, since we already have all the items already. I think it's good, it's great that we look at general plan visions. And not only that, we have economic development strategy plan that we never looked at either. And we have bike and park plan that we never look at every year when we set goals. So, I definitely think any plan in the future should start with the documents we already have. And right now, I kind of feel like, okay, now we are separating items into five categories. Now, are we trying to separate them into 12 categories? We can try and do that, but maybe the staff can try to come back with a categorization next time. We don't have to waste time here to do that if we want to see. Let's find out how we are meeting the general plan goals, maybe not just by this year, but maybe last year's goals, right? That's to get where we are all this, in the current three years, how are we meeting the 12 categories? That might be a way to look at it. But I think tonight, the main thing is prioritize the work program items.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And we have a hand raised from Councilmember Wei. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wei, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Sorry. Okay, I agree with Vice Mayor Chow, because I think it's great to match our general plan goals, but a lot of the work program here fits into one or two or three of our general plan goals. So, I would agree with Vice Mayor Chow. Let's go for it, because we have them in front of us, and let's go either prioritize the five or go one by one. I'm good with any process, but I think it's time we can delve into the programs.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Councilmember Willie, did you want to add any commentary to the topic that we're discussing right now?
I think in the interest of time, you know, I'll just save my comments as we go through the line items. I think we're all learning and growing, you know? I think Vice Mayor Chow did a good job of characterizing that last year was essentially a big improvement over the previous year, and if we now carry these thoughts from this year to next year. And so, you know, where we're at now, let's continue, and if there were something that could flavor things in a different light at one of the subsequent meetings, by all means, you know, we take some time and discuss it at that point. But for tonight, I mean, you know, we're hitting on nine o'clock already, so, yeah.
Okay, well, let's take that under advisement. I think it's a good comment to consider our goals on an ongoing and annual basis as well. I will just make a quick comment with regard to just the work plan items themselves. Very glad that they're in front of us right now. They almost were not in front of us. And so, kind of working backwards from there, it seems like we're trying to, you know, trying to gain back ground, first of all, in considering the work plan again, and now we are doing that. And I think taking a further step back is wise in its observation right now, in the sense that, you know, perhaps these items that we're working on the work plan would be able to follow a more directed structure if you had overarching goals at the beginning. And so, for our process going forward, I agree, it does make sense to put a meeting in there to talk about the, you know, general goals as an initial starting point. Perhaps as a matter of the product of our discussion tonight, we can be looking at some of the emphases and whether they do kind of, you know, advise us to perhaps characterize some of those goals in a somewhat different manner based upon what we're really valuing as more immediate work plan items and higher priority ones over the course of the next fiscal year. And again, I just want to remind everyone that these 59 are not set in stone. If you have something based upon what you've seen as a result of, you know, for instance, our year with COVID, please feel free to propose those. That is also what this exercise is about as well. So, I will go ahead and, Councilmember Willie's right, it is getting a little bit later, and I want to remind everyone, just, you know, try to be efficient about your commentary and your questions as we go through each of the 59. And so, if you have additional items, please take notes and be prepared to speak about them at the end of our consideration of these 59. And so, I promise you that we'll circle back, and I'll ask each of our council members, what, you know, in addition to the 59 that you heard, would you like to propose as something that we also consider? But let's try to get the totality of what's under consideration first and the contours of it before we start potentially adding items. Okay, so, with that, let's go on to, let's go on to the page-by-page addressing of the various work plan items in the spreadsheet that we have, starting with public engagement.
Yeah, I'm on Attachment A, page one, and I did want to make one remark regarding the goals. We will, if it's okay with council, we will make an attempt to, after we get feedback from council, to look at the general plan 12 items and figure out how, if there's a way to bucket the work program items that way, if that's what council wants.
Okay, that sounds good. So, let's do this. What I see is...
This is page one of the public engagement transparency page in Attachment A.
Right, it looks like... Right, it looks like there are seven items here. Did you want to speak to? You you let's take them by screen by screen, so we and the members of the public don't have to remember what was scrolled in. But did you want to speak to the, oh, let's make it a width.
Let's make it a little bit bigger.
Actually, I have a fairly large screen in my office, but yeah. We we definitely can't do a page view. Let's do a width view of this and blow it up so that, you know, we I I don't know about others, but I I can barely see the print. Okay, so did you want to speak to the enumeration of the items? Is that something that you want to try to do here?
I was thinking kind of opposite. I was thinking of going off the model that Planning Commission, that that Councilmember Moore said. On this page, are there any questions or details about any particular items? I can hit the ones that I think might be interesting to you all. I can just start and then see if that prompts questions.
Sorry, let me let me clarify my question to you. Do you want to number all the items from one to 59? So so that we have a common frame of reference as we're kind of going through this. I guess it's a PDF, you can't really do that.
No, but to potentially add confusion, we have taken this and numbered them one through 59.
Oh, have you? And where have you done that?
Katie has it and she can pop it up on her screen.
Okay, great.
And it's in the same order as attachment A, I think. So maybe that'll that'll
That is the hope, yes. I will also email the council and we will post this numbered version after the meeting. I'm sending the email right now.
So but we all have a paper copy right now. So can you maybe just give us the first number of each each?
I'll share my screen with the numbers on them.
They're leaving each on my paper.
Right.
Can you all see this?
Yes.
Sorry, where did you put the numbering? Was that?
And you not see it?
Okay.
Far, far left. Just what's the first number for sustainability?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. And then the first for transportation?
Twenty-one.
First for housing?
Thirty-one.
And then first for quality of life?
Lawrence Smithy.
Thirty-six.
Oh, sorry. Good one.
Sorry, what was that? Was that thirty-six or?
Thirty-six for Lawrence Smithy.
Thirty-six.
Okay. Okay, great, let's let's go back to public engagement and well, we'll scroll through one screen, one readable screen at a time. So for items one through six, we've got consideration of new commissions and committees, the pilot for online store for city branded items, the leadership program, the roadmap project, the Small Business Development Center counseling hours, and the new city seal. Does anyone have questions about these six items? And Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised.
All right, so if we were following this like the Planning Commission, we would just simply go, you know, page one, are there any questions? And we have the enumeration, so we're items, I believe, one through nine on this page. Okay, so for the first item, question is as opposed to consideration of new commission and committees, this could actually be done as ad hoc basis as needed at no cost. And in this list, there is nothing on on seniors, whether or not you would add a senior commission. And we do have a senior item, so I would like, if we can add to this for the objective, to consider a senior commission. Adding that, if anyone, if there's any support for that.
As a as a as opposed to the senior advisory committee that that supports the senior center?
Yeah, I think we have a senior center. I I think, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Hung.
You have to call on people.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Hung, I appreciate that. Let me address the points in order. This is not the Planning Commission. I I will be running this meeting. And so we're looking at this screen by screen. We don't have enumeration to the public. And so we're looking at items one through six here. So with regard to adding and commentary on these items, what we're doing right now is operating under the ability of council to ask questions to clarify these items because that was the request. And following this, we can have a session where we're making commentary. But let's go through this in the spirit that we're trying to try to clarify what's there because that was what the initial request was. And so again, the items one through six. The question is, are there any clarifying questions with regard to what these items are? Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, I see your hand is up.
Yeah. So I think I need to provide clarification for what these items are from two years ago. Because we have been having ad hoc items that added on, and this item kept getting delayed. The original intent was that we need a commission on community engagement because that's something that keep we keep keep coming back. Whenever we do a feasibility study or do mobile vendor or any kind of study or dog leash, off leash park, we will have consultants who will restart the whole engagement process. And and then throughout the year, we need community engagement. And maybe this should be done with the commission rather than city staff to do it. So that commission who actually represent the residents can provide. That was intent of one of possible addition. So what my idea is, it could be a library and community engagement commission as as that is done in Campbell. And then another idea was transportation, that's an important issue, but we don't have a commission that's really responsible for that. Bike had part of the function is that, but not really. But other cities have transportation as in the name of a commission. So that's something we should consider, especially if we would like to look at long term mass transit. And then another thing is economic development committee is not a commission. And it doesn't really have a structure, a five member structure as other commission. And as we know, that economic development in Cupertino is kind of defunct. We have a one person, part time employee responsible for that. But I see that other cities have more concerted effort to really develop an economy for the cities. So maybe a commission with committed commission members might help us. So those were the intention of this item. But this past two years, it has been delayed and delayed and delayed. And then yet I see that two other items today are added. For example, last year, the former mayor proposed to expand the bike path commission into a whole complete street commission. And that was added as an item. And then we said, okay, we probably shouldn't consider just that. We should consider all together and then we never got to it. And this year, I see that in this item, we have fine arts commission are trying to redefine its scope and rename as a separate item. And the environmental review committee also is trying to redefine its goal on another separate item. So I don't know.
I believe the ERC one is also from a nineteen twenty four program.
Okay, one one person at a time, please. And also asked to be recognized if you want to speak.
So do we want to do this? We we keep trying to say we want to do this together to have a complete view of where where we are and or or do we have commission looking at different functions? But then we never got to it. But we keep having this one-off ad hoc request. So how do we want to deal with this?
Okay. So so that so that is a very elaborate preface to a question that I think is legitimate as to frankly, all fifty-nine of these items. Do you want to modify in accordance to what you're describing? You know, where I'm running into an issue here is process and notice. So we do have a description here. You've identified, Vice Mayor Chow, a number of items that that deal with commissions and committees. So I think one thing that we can do, because we're posing the question as clarification staff here, is to get a sense from our city manager or our applicable staff what the what the what the sense of how much time it would take to take on those modifications would be. With, you know, the understanding that, you know, we don't really have an estimated time budget, which is what I would have preferred. We have an estimated monetary budget. But if if we're going to go and modify the commissions and committees to such a significant extent, what, you know, first of all, would be the added bandwidth required from staff? And and second of all, where are we with this, you know, particular item? It seems like Vice Mayor Chow is asserting that we've spent a fairly significant amount of time on it. That's something that we should be considering going forward. So city manager, would you like to speak to that or?
Yes, I would, please.
Okay.
So originally, when I first got in here, I think it was contemplated with some sort of study session to talk about the commissions, expansions and have a discussion. Then COVID hit and we re-tooled the information we were gathering. We were doing a comparative for the council between cities, who has which commissions, which cities have how many, just, I think, in Santa Clara County. And we started putting a paper together. And I I apologize because it could be that it's finished and I just haven't forwarded. It was almost like a, I put it in, we put it in, we're putting in a staff report so that at least council can have the information to consider going forward. What we can do with regard to the ERC item that also was a nineteen twenty work program item, as well as the renaming or scoping of the Fine Arts Commission, we can incorporate that into that paper and get it to the council. We'll make sure it gets ready and and get it to the council in the form of a report. So at least you have information that you can act on in the future.
All right, we have a handout from Councilmember Willie.
So I was just going to comment that I also think that a couple additional commissions, when we when we have such knowledgeable residents and interest on their part to contribute, to not take advantage of it, the transportation, I think, needs to be traffic and transportation, they're interrelated. So these additional potential commissions, if the city manager were to go off and come back at the next thing and tell us for these three additional, potential three additional commissions, what would it mean in terms of new staff time? And leave it at that. And then we could make the decision as to, do we go with one, two, or all three, or none?
Yeah, that's reasonable, Councilmember Willie, I think.
Okay, we'll go to, let's go to Councilmember Wei before we go back to Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Wei.
So I think we're coming into too much details. We are just asking if we have questions or not. If all of us think it's important to continue this, we can rate it three or five. So I I think we need to kind of go through pages, you have a questions, and then we come back and rate and and, you know, remember them.
Right, I I, you know, where I'm running into a bit of an issue, Councilmember Wei, is that there are some contexts being provided here and whether we whether we whether we change the the scope of the objective is something that seems to me to be a legitimate question. And and so I I think that was getting answered. I I understand what your point is, though. You know, this is the the first of roughly ten screens worth of material. And so, yeah, we'll endeavor to to move this along. And I imagine not every every set of items is going to, you know, delve into as much detail. Let's go back to Councilmember Moore. And and again, we're we're at questions, you know, please feel free to add add commentary to the extent that it's a matter of, you know, perhaps defining the the borders of the objective and then asking about the viability of that. But we'll go back to Councilmember Moore for this first set of six items here.
Okay, I I appreciate Vice Mayor Chow mentioning that this item had some history in being a community engagement. However, that's only from the title of the of this page, Public Engagement and Transparency. Might I guess that this item was about that? And my concern is that we have economic development in there and that this is, this is a really so this is a very full item in and of itself. And I would also suggest that you pull economic, the Economic Development Committee out of this one. Because that's its whole, that's a whole, that's a whole thing on its own, as you're very well aware of. So I I'm concerned about what we have for flexibility when we're looking at this list. And can we slice and dice some of these items up like this one, which which seems to be trying to take care of a few things at once? Are we stuck with this as it is? I mean, can we add on the senior commission or not? Can we, it's supposed to be about community engagement, but it doesn't say something about that.
Well, yeah, as I read the language of the objective, it's exploring the possibility of additional commissions or committees to address city needs. It it seems like it's not necessarily the formation, it's the examination of whether it would be advisable or what the factors are with regard to adding commissions. And those are exemplars, such as traffic, transportation, economic development. But it's an interesting point you raise as to whether it could be parched out and, you know, made into more packetized items. I I I wonder, you know, given the positioning of it as something that's an initial exploration, whether we could in fact expand on it? Because we do have two committees with the city that you, you know, rightly point out, the Economic Development Committee actually doesn't have a written charter. So we don't really know what it does, you know, in accordance to what we have written in either resolutions or ordinances. We don't know who comprises it. We don't know who chairs it, we don't know who vice chairs it. We essentially don't know anything about its scope and its procedure. The same goes for the Fiscal Strategic, Fiscal Strategic Planning Committee. And so one of the things I would like to see, if we're considering this, is an examination into whether we can and should be creating a written charter for those committees. So so I will I will add to your question to pose to staff. Is it a possibility to break this up? And conversely, is it a possibility to add to this? And what their reaction is to that?
So if you have items that you want to add, I would hold those and add them at the end so that we can actually make an attempt to consolidate them as appropriate?
Right, I mean, my my question is whether a modification to this item would make sense in the context of, you know, these couple of committees that that exist and have been practicing, but don't actually have a written charter.
The the more you modify it, the longer it'll take to finish.
And what about the other side of this? So Councilmember Moore was talking about cutting it up into, you know, various components.
If we do what Councilmember Willie suggested in that we have a list of potential expansions of commissions or committees or resoping, we could probably slice them up if these are not exemplars, as you were pointing out, and be able to tell you how many additional staff are required for it. He said it slightly differently, but, you know, it's going to require more staff. But that shouldn't stop you from considering it. That's part of the consideration and the information that we have not developed yet.
So could we potentially change the language of this to say, you know, the existing language is explore the possibility of additional commissions or committees? And then between that and the next word two, or potential expansion of the scope of existing commissions or committees? or potential expansion of the scope of existing commissions or committees, and then adding the rest of it to address city needs such as traffic, transportation, and economic development? That, that, that would seem to be able to take into account Councilmember Willie's concern as well as Councilmember Moore's, you know, possibility of looking at, at, at more scope, but also being able to take it on in a, in a successful manner such that it doesn't become overly wieldy. With, with the idea that, again, this is an exploration of the possibility. This is not actually the chartering of new commissions or committees or the reformation of, of ones that are existing. It's, it's an initial look at the advisability of doing that.
So I suppose you could. I just have two concerns about that. One is, as much as you modify it, then there's new items to it that staff will need to work on, which will extend perhaps Vice Mayor's distaste for how long this has been delayed. So that's why I'm suggesting is that maybe underneath it, there's some other things that we, maybe new things that we add so they can move independently. The other suggestion I have is that we're only on item six and we were supposed to be focusing just on, you know, content questions. And then if you want to add new items at the end, you're gonna have to then compare them to the other 59 and figure out what the true priority is, right? It's just more and more stuff.
Can I add something?
Vice Mayor Chow, yes.
Sorry.
Okay, so when we first proposed this back in 2019, I think I did include the, I did mention senior commission. But at that time, I was told that there is already a senior advisory committee in senior center, and there was a semi-senior commission. But it didn't, it, it was a duplicate of function, and so they discontinued it. So that's why it's not listed there. But then the intent of this item was not to limit to the list, list of things here. It's such as. So it's really, this, in the, when we are discussing this item, it's, I, I intended this to be a study session to start a discussion. And I didn't expect the staff to spend a lot of time collect all the information from all the other cities. I was expecting this would be study session, let's talk about what we intend to do. And then if there is intention to do economic development commi- commission, we spin it off and then we prioritize what you say, okay, we want, we might want to do this. Then for that particular state, economic or transportation or senior, then we spin it off that decide what to do, right? Then, then, then you'll take more discuss, more investigation on what other city does in each of this topic. I think that was the intention in 2019. So that's why I keep wondering, how come it's been so wrong? You just need to stay scheduled study session for us to talk.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, your, your point regarding the, the lengthiness of the consideration of this item, I, I think it's been made multiple, multiple times. So, you know, in the interest of getting on to the, the scope of this list, let's, let's move on. Councilmember Moore, what do you have here?
Of course, we just add the senior commis, senior commission.
Okay, we, you, you, your comment has been heard. And again, you know, these are clarifying questions with regard to the nature of these items, which, you know, I, I would like to remind everyone was a request that we, we go through and get these kinds of points of clarity on the items that exist. So, so let's, let's continue to do that. Vice Mayor Moore, your hand is up. Did you have a question with regarding, with regard to these six items here?
Councilmember Moore, yes. For, for this first item, are we allowed to add on to the objective and redline a couple of items and say, senior commission? And then at the end, you know, knock it off? But, but, but my concern is that we might actually want a senior commission in order to work on those items, which members of the public noted. We have a really packed senior item coming up on this list as we, as we move through the next pages. So I'm, I, my wanting to hold on to the senior commission has to deal with providing a body that is able to implement, as the years go on, something that's not just necessarily attached to the, the, the senior center, but that there's other issues, housing, you name it. The technology issue that the senior commission could uniquely help integrate and coordinate with the library programs, the rep parks and rec offerings, something like that. And so I, to me, it's, it's valuable to have something that's not so attached. I could be wrong, but something that's not so attached to the senior center that can get those, get those issues taken care of and will be really committed to doing that. So my question, can we have a little redline, a couple of little texts there that says senior commission? Because as the Vice Mayor said, it does say such as, which would lead one to believe that there are other alternatives that could be tacked on.
I, I have no objection if you wanted to add senior in front of traffic. I, I mean, I, I don't think that's, I, I don't think that's an implausible possibility. So it looks like, okay, you're, you're attempting to do. This is an Excel spreadsheet, so I don't know if there is, well, you can make a different color text. Okay, great. So let's go on to the next set. And I will apply timer at this point. And, and again, we're, we're clarifying questions with regard to the items that are on there. I'll remind everyone that we can go back and try to add items. And if needs be, we can go back to try to modify. But let's, let's try to keep our modifications out of this clarifying exercise. So let's scroll down to the next set of items.
Seven through.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Mayor Paul, I just want to, just for clarification, I would personally tack the new city seal on with the online store for city branded items. If you're changing the city seal, your branding is going to alter and you could potentially waste a ton of money on city branded items, which would all need to have a new logo.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. I, I will note that's, that's a comment, it is not a question. And so it, it seems like you're very clear on what that item is. And so please reserve your comments until we're going, we're done clarifying these questions, which I, I will note was a, was a request that you yourself made. So let's look at items seven through nine. Are there questions regarding these items? Okay, let's go down to the next set.
So my.
Councilmember Willie, I apologize, I wasn't looking at the.
Just waiting to get called.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, thank you.
Yeah, so, so number nine is really important to me. And the way it's worded here, create ongoing engagement activities for residents. But I think this, you know, does this, does this really capture the essence? The most important aspect of being on the city council is to represent the residents. And this is the, the line item for us to be engaging the residents. And so I think, you know, it's, it's not a question, it's a comment. It needs to be, when it fits our schedule, not necessarily eight to five in the evenings, on the weekends. We need city staff to facilitate our engagement items with the community. And try to leverage such that multiple councilmen having engagement meetings and stuff can be listed on the same notification so residents can say, oh, I could go to the Tuesday one, but not the Saturday one, or vice, vice versa. So while it's a nice little shortly worded item here, it really needs to be what the council needs, not so, so short. I'm finding I don't get as much support as I need. That's the bottom line. With a day job and a family, I don't get as much support as I need. So that's my, my comment.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
So on the same topic, item nine, resident engagement. I see this $5,000 for giveaways and printing. Will this item also include some sort of policy for that? Because you could potentially have one council person giving, having giveaways and, and how is that budget going to be equitably distributed among the, the council members? So it's, and, and what's the policy regarding approaching elections? When's the cutoff for that? So this is, it, it seems like it's a great idea, but it, it needs some rules around it. So under objectives, it would, in my opinion, are you going to have policy with that? Or, or is this just kind of a as-you-see-fit type of item? Which that could concerns me.
City Manager, did you have any kind of response to that?
I would guess we already have rules around that, but it would really have to be if this is voted up as a five by people, then we would look at those policies if they do not exist.
Okay, so, so we are, we already have coffee talks. So is there some, is there anything about this that's different?
So coffee talks, food for thought. Living room conversations was mentioned, that I guess Saratoga does something like that. I believe what Councilmember Willie is thinking about, and certainly don't let me put words in your mouth, John, is like in 2019, we put a structure in place where you could do a town hall. Two council members could put a town hall together. It usually ran from four to six o'clock, you could topic specific. We had multiple council members take advantage of it, where it was after hours, after people's work hours. They could even slide the time, they could make it any, any evening of the work week. And city staff could, you know, would do a setup and make sure everything was available for those in-person town halls. There were a number of them. So there were like, one focused on air quality with the back med board there, one focused on the library expansion, like the mayor had.
In the last year, I've asked for support and I've been told no support outside of eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Right.
And what works is Zoom better than webinar? You know, how do we leverage the best of the best? And as individuals, we're each in our own little silo with our day job, our family, and everything else, where I think we need a person, a staff person, who's gonna make sure we're all running on all eight cylinders. And we don't have that.
Yeah, and so what he's talking about is that, for example, San Jose has staff that supports their full-time council members. Part-time staff, part-time council members are not supported that way throughout the other cities. And he's created, I think you're talking about your roundtable, John? He has a roundtable activity where it's like a community forum by which they go and talk about whatever they want. And it was created out of the Zoom. Well, the idea was that it would create an opportunity for each of the council members to be able to have a virtual office hour to replace physical office hours that we can't currently have. So in pre-COVID times, for example, Vice Mayor Chow would have monthly office hours at the senior center lobby, where people would walk in and she would, they would talk to her about various topics. And so we were trying to replicate that in this COVID environment. John's a little bit crabby at me because we, our video staff who runs the Zooms are not, we're not making them available on weekends because of the COVID work schedule. We're, we're super busy, we're super, everything's harder to do.
Or evenings.
We can do evenings if we can do setup, if we can do a setup during the day, during their workday. So that's what we've been, we've been refraining from in the COVID environment. If we anticipate that we're out of COVID in this coming fiscal year at some point, even the last half of the fiscal year, things will go back to normal, like being able to do festivals and having a Cupertino table there and supporting council members in concert with those kinds of public outreach events.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow?
So a question about the cost. I'm guessing $5,000 you are thinking about, like the coffee mugs we were giving to residents?
It's a nominal budget that we.
And the coffees, for the coffee talks. So that's the kind of budget. And does that include, for example, extra staff in time? That's not the Monday.
It does not.
So then if we have any meeting at night or on weekends, that would need extra staff time?
It'll need overtime, yeah, it'll need overtime for videos.
So this overtime cost is not included in the $5,000?
Correct, that is correct.
That'll be a lot more.
That is correct.
So this $5,000 is just possible materials for.
You know, like when we put giveaway bags together or, you know, a mug.
Oh, like signs, signs for this coffee talk. So that's the printing.
Okay, exactly.
So, so with the conversation with residents, why is any staff time required here? I, I mean, aren't we able to individually reach out to residents?
John wants us to support his Zoom.
Yeah, realize, you know, we're not city staff. We have to do our day job to pay our mortgages, raise our families. We need city staff to do as much of the legwork for our engagement and for our activities so that we can be as effective as possible at connecting with the residents. And right now, trying to shoehorn in resident engagement activities, when I have project meetings, design reviews, kids' sporting events to go to, yes, even during COVID, you know, push comes to shove and it winds up being very infrequent. And if it was, if it had some, some staff person where I could say him on this day and at this time, and rest assured, everything's taken care of, I wouldn't hesitate to say, hey, I want to do this every other week. But that's not the way it is. And that's why we're here.
Okay, got it. And Councilmember Moore, if I open it up to another round of questions, you know, we're gonna take too long on these three items. But I see you and Vice Mayor Chow, do you have your hands up? I ask that you not make a point with regard to a commentary. If you have a clarifying question, please ask it. And, and, you know, again, for the rest of this, I will hold everyone to questions for this and limit it to a set amount of time for each grouping. I think something on the average of a minute or so per item is, is gonna be reasonable, given the fact that we have an hour's worth based upon that metric alone. So Councilmember Moore, do you have a clarifying question at this point?
I certainly do. Thank you, Mayor Paul. And I do want to state that probably would have been really beneficial if we did not have the, the pre-meeting canceled. And that we could have gone over some of these items and, and had the suggestions already given to staff. That probably would have been brilliant, but that ship sailed and here we are. So item seven, under objective, I would like to, well, just, just for the clarifying part, for, for having, having kits, personal preparedness kits, I would prefer that that had some economic qualification to it, perhaps that, something that West Valley Community Services could help identify. And otherwise, is this to give these, these kits out to the entire community? Or you, or was the intention to have some income qualification for it? And when I, when I read personal preparedness kit, I'm not really sure. Do they mean earthquake preparedness? Or, or what, what kind of disaster preparation is this? And, and anyway, that's my question.
Okay, I see Tom has turned on his camera. Tom, did you want to field that question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers. Councilmember Moore, a question about qualification. We had updated our objective here to include a action on behalf of the members who have signed up to receive the Public Preparedness Education Campaign that have signed up for either the Citizen Corps and the Block Leader Program so that we can enhance community engagement at that point. We could consider a qualifier in terms of income, but we had not yet investigated that. Second, with the kit, we would be preparing an all-hazard preparedness kit. Nothing specific to a certain hazard like earthquake or wildfire, but that a preparedness kit is designed to provide you the equipment and supplies to be prepared for every hazard that could come our way and could be.
Okay, great, thank you for that answer, Tom. Very, very, very clear. So let's go on to the next set of items. If you could scroll down, please. Okay, so we have items 10 through 12 so far. Is it possible to, are there any other, okay, 10 through 13. Any questions regarding these four items? Okay, I don't see hands up. Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Okay, well, I was just wondering, it's the visual and performing arts event. Is there, is there some way that neighborhood events is overlapping this?
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. We have our Director of Parks and Rec or Recreation and Community Services, Joanne Magrini. Welcome, Joanne.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Yes, these are two separate items. The first was neighborhood events recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I believe that I probably, I don't know if there's a typo. I see Parks and Recreation as a department. I'm not sure. Visual and Performing Arts was a suggestion made by the Fine Arts Commission. So they're two separate commission recommendations.
Okay, great, thank you, Joanne. Who's our staff liaison for fine arts? Is that, help me out on who the staff liaison is?
It's Kelsey Christiansen. She is a Parks and Recreation Coordinator.
Okay, so it's under Parks and Rec at this point? Because I know at one point it was, it was through the city clerk's office and another point it was through our planning department, but now it's back in Parks and Rec? Okay.
Right.
Okay, great. So, so I guess your answer encompasses that as well. Councilmember Moore, did you have a follow-up question to that?
Yes, so under neighborhood events, so we had, it was canceled this past year, but the previous year we had these, you know, awesome neighborhood park events that were going on. And I'm questioning this 50,000 estimated budget. Would that have covered everything that happened two summers ago? All those cool park events? And if it is, I'm confused how it is that the Fine Arts Commission has nearly the same amount budget for a community event versus what is potentially multiple. Could I have some clarifying information about that?
Absolutely. So the Parks and Recreation Commission wanted to just make sure that as COVID restrictions were lifted, that we brought back neighborhood events in whatever capacity we could. And so for this fiscal year, we estimated four concerts, four movies and eight classes. So a limited, more limited offering than we would in normal years. But the intention is absolutely to bring back all the neighborhood events that previously occurred before COVID.
All right, thank you, Director Magrini. Let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow?
So I'm a little confused that the neighborhood events refers to what the city already were offering since 2018, I think, every year. I don't think they were a council program item at that time. So this will, I thought those were like operational items that.
It is an operational item.
That the Parks and Rec Department just does.
Correct, I agreed.
Whether we prioritize this or not, your department will, will carry it out anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then the visual and performing arts, do they, do, do park, do fine, does Fine Arts Commission currently host, host any programs? I thought they have some program like multicultural. They, they feature a different country each time, right? So this is in addition to that?
The request was for a specific visual and performing arts event, festival-type event. And our recommendation was to collaborate with different festivals and events as they come back online and to look at planning in future years when COVID is not restricting us from that, that capability.
So we don't currently have any visual performing arts festival event offered by the city?
Specifically, I, I'm not aware because I have not actually been here to experience any festivals or events yet, unfortunately. But I don't think any that are done by the Fine Arts Commission. So this was for the Fine Arts Commission specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Way?
Oh, just a clarification, sorry, clarification question. We are putting, for example, the neighborhood events, even though we're doing it, but it's going to take staff time. So we are prioritizing it, right? I mean, the council can say scrap it, we're not going to do it. That's why it's here. Is that the reason why it's here?
So again, my, my understanding is that the commission just wants the department and the city to make sure that these items come back as COVID restrictions are lifted. And that is fully our intention as the department is able to offer these items.
Right, I get it. I mean, I mean, you, this is here because we need to prioritize it so the staff can give time to do it. Is that the reason why it's here?
We, we brought forth all the recommendations by the commission. So we are, these will be part of operations.
Okay.
The reason, the reason hung, I think you're asking is because the Parks and Rec Commission wants the council to see it. So, I mean, and I think the Vice Mayor's question is more around, does she vote for it or not?
That's right, and that's also my question.
It is a, right, it is a good way to see the number, see the effort and have to consider it. But if it, if we're going to do it anyway, we'll find a way to mark that up so that you don't.
Okay, so we still need to vote for it because I think we're all going to vote for it. But it's going to be, what am I saying is because it's there and still takes staff time, we need to really prioritize and vote for it. Okay, I think.
Well, it actually seems more like the opposite in, in that.
Yes.
It probably just shouldn't be there because it's going to happen anyway.
So we wanted to be really careful in making sure we included all commission recommendations, that none of them were not viewed by the council. But if it's marked as will be part of operations, we will be doing it.
Right, I, I mean, so isn't it fair to say that we probably just should not put it into the vote?
Right, unless, unless you want to mark it as a zero or something, then it's.
Could be, or the, it could be a category one that I mentioned required, right? So we don't need to vote on it.
But yeah, you still capture the hours.
I'm sorry, what did you say? City Manager?
I was just, I was just confirming what Vice Mayor was saying in that maybe she puts a one next to it. But we know we're going to, for the ones that say either we have to do it like Rina or will be done in operations so that we can account for the hours, right? The, the number of hours it'll take.
Well, I mean, this, this seems kind of distinct, right? I mean, it, it was a request from the Parks and Rec Commission. But from what we're being, from the information that we have, it seems like it's happening irrespective of whether council, you know, prioritizes it as a five or a one or even a zero.
Correct.
And so it, it does seem like this is, you know, for the purposes of our prioritization exercise, it shouldn't be on here. It would be kind of like, you know, putting on here, you know, the evaluation of, of upgrades to the Microsoft Office Suite, right? I mean, it's something that's going to happen anyway.
Correct. I think some of them are valuable to know if, if there's no longer interest in doing it from the council. But as long as there's interest, we'll continue to do it. So unless someone votes all zeros on it, we're going to continue to do it.
Well, but if, if affirmation is meaningless, okay, in this context, and, and the only thing that could potentially have some effect is unanimity of indifference. I, I don't think that it should be here for the purposes of our exercise. We're trying to prioritize items that we want to have. And for being told that this is going to happen anyway.
Well, there are, there is a difference though. Can I comment? There is a difference in, from the point of view of Parks and Rec Commission. Because they, sounds like they want this item to be on their work program so that they can provide input.
Right.
To this operational item. But if it's not on their work program, they cannot even get it on their item, even though the city is doing it anyway.
Right, and it seems like we should be having a classification, like I was saying at the beginning of the meeting, for something that could potentially just go to the commission if it's not something that would require our support in this instance to happen. If we ended up putting this as a one, for instance, collectively, then it could still happen at the Parks and Rec Commission level as, as they're being, yeah, as, as, as they're requesting the item to show up on their work plan. You know, I, I think we're actually kind of conflating work plan items that we have, that we want to take on specifically for council. And so these are good questions to know with regard to whether these items will happen irrespective of whether they're on our work plan. So I appreciate the clarifying questions. I think we have clarity on this at this point. And seeing no other hands up, let's go on to the next set of items here. Okay, so it looks like we'll be able to fit two. I'm going to assume that people know what the Climate Action Plan is and what the updates are. Workforce planning, are there questions on these two items? It looks like they would be numbered 14 and 15. Councilmember Moore?
Yes, item 14, it's more of a question for Deb. I really feel that this, when I look at it, that this should be a manager and, and staff discretion and in that it's your call for how you're going to do the workforce planning, that that's part of your job description, I would think. That's the first one. The second one is that I'd already been looking at the Climate Action Plan and it appears that we are supposed to be working on an update to it starting this year already. So I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that. But it's, but it seemed like, I don't know if it's something that we have to do, but it seemed like this was already expected to, to start, start rolling through the process.
To speak to the Climate Action Plan question, we are in the process. This was a fiscal year 21 item, so it's already in progress. But it's a multi-year item, so it would need to continue. I do think that is one that the city should undertake. And then in terms of workforce planning, it will be incorporated as part of operations. Essentially, there are some items here when we tag them as will be in operations, but we didn't want to remove them without allowing council to see it and without hearing your input on whether that's okay, that they move to operations or if you want them on the work program for visibility.
Thanks, Katie. We also have Andrew Devort, our Environmental Sustainability Manager, who has turned on his camera. Andre, did you want to speak to Councilmember Moore's question as well?
I believe Katie probably addressed the, the question that's tagged as a current item. If there's any other clarifications on, on progress to date, happy to provide that.
Okay, so, but just to reiterate, Climate Action Plan consideration is teed up for this upcoming fiscal year, correct?
That's correct, we're underway.
Okay.
Great. All right, let's, sorry.
I need some voting advice then. So does that mean that we need to five the, the Climate Action Plan? And is a one okay on, on workforce planning? I don't know what to do with that.
Okay, thank you for the question. But city, city manager Fang, how, how about it? If we put a one next to this and it's still going to happen, can you provide us some voting guidance here?
I would say that I, I wouldn't vote for it. I mean, put it in the same category as operations. But notice that the note says it's recommended to continue by Sustainability Commission. They want you to see it. And it does, and it's large, so it's going to take, you know, a fair amount of effort.
Okay, good questions, fair questions. And, and you know, I just want to put in a, a comment that I, I very much appreciate that last question because I, in fact, in my preliminary, in my preliminary rankings, if you will, put a five next to the Climate Action Plan. So we have Vice Mayor Chow as well. Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, so for number 14, workforce planning, my understanding is this might be a little beyond our regular operation because we are looking at a potential 40% of staff that might retire in the next few years. So it will take more concerted effort to be, to develop the workforce. So is that what you have in mind? Then it's something that I'm marking as R, that means required, we will have to do it anyway. The same for Climate Action Plan, right?
Well, I'm getting a clarification from Katie, so I misstated. If the Climate Action Plan is important to you, I put a five, I spend a five on it. The workforce planning piece is more in line with Councilmember Moore's comments. Yes, there's a good portion of our employee base that is eligible for retirement. And certainly workforce planning is square in my job darts. My responsibility to make sure that we have a plan in place, that we are ensuring that staff gets refreshed, there's career planning, there's all kinds of stuff that goes into workforce planning. We'll continue to do that. And it's not something that you stop doing. It's kind of continuous.
Okay.
I would, so I would like to take. Yeah, what I would like to do is. Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the next items after 15. Okay, we have 16 through 19 in front of us. Doesn't seem like we'll be able to fit 20. Although it does seem to have the bulk of it on 20 for the city light transition assessment. So, so for what we have in front of us, 16 through 19, would anyone like to ask any questions here? Okay, so we have Vice Mayor Chow?
Oh, sorry, and it was left over, but okay, I have a question about the municipal water system. So what we are planning to do is for this item?
So this particular item, and I'm sure Roger can provide more information.
$150,000.
Hey, Director Lee?
Yes, good evening. Our, our current lease with Sandy Water expires in November of '22. So we're looking at what our options will be in the future, whether we potentially sell, renew a lease, go out to a new lease or, or operate the system ourselves. The, the legal requirements are very restrictive. It's what our options, process could be to follow. So this work plan item just provides for that process.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, I just want to clarify that this investigate alternatives to City Hall, item 16, involves the recent, the recent purchase or potential purchase of the new property at Torrey, the seismic upgrade, that everything's, everything's on the table for this one. Is that correct?
That is correct. And last, so as of last year, pre-COVID, the thought was we were also investigating, you know, not being necessarily located right where City Hall was because of the carhold raising. There was the alternative for the seismic upgrade and a refresh. So there was a number of alternatives being looked. I now think we're honing in on the one that's a post-COVID environment. So yes, that's true.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Let's go on to the next set of items, starting with the city light transition assessment. And it seems like that's possibly the only item we'll be able to fit into there. Does anyone have a question about the city light transition assessment? All right, Councilmember Moore?
Okay, so this, this had to do with the dark sky issue potential. I just wanted to see if the manager could clarify this for the end-of-life potential issue with some of our current fixtures. And, and actually as a, as maybe a courtesy to the public that if any, that the, because you helped me on this item earlier today, if you could share with the public what you told me.
So this is kind of a nice convergence of timing, I think. Our streetlight infrastructure is reaching its, the end of its useful life. And at the same time, we have a desire to comply with our own Bird Safe Dark Sky new ordinance that is, has been, is being adopted, has been, is being adopted. And so we've spent some time evaluating whether or not streetlights can meet the dark sky requirements. And in fact, we have some alternatives, so that's this item.
And I see that our city engineer Chad Mosley has turned on his camera. Did you want to add anything to that, Chad?
I think Deb did a good job of covering.
I think Deb did a good job of covering it. I'm like, I can answer any further questions you may have.
Uh, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so the extra item was, um, that had to deal with the potential for, for shielding. Um, if some of the lights are problematic that are in existence now, uh, that, that's using three-one-one, um, in order to get some assistance.
Yes, you can either send in an email or three-one-one if there's an LED bulb replacement that, it's currently happening now when they burn out. So, um, you can request a shroud to be installed, whatever light is now emanating too bright.
And I recommend using three-one-one to, to put those complaints in or those requests in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Our next question is from Vice Mayor Chow.
So, this item does not specifically mention, uh, that it will try to comply with the dark sky ordinance or at least try to, um, it only, it seems to be mainly about converging from induction to L C S B fixed lights.
If you notice, the, um, item continues to say, uh, allow lights to be turned down and assessment will evaluate. We've also evaluated that there are streetlights available at the twenty-seven hundred Kelvin level, which is the bird, the dark sky, what the dark sky regulates.
Oh, okay, it's the last one. It does say, would meet the dark sky requirement. Okay. And then, uh, with all the deployment of small cell equipment, and we are replacing those light, uh, light, um, poles also, right? So with those, then this would become the new standard that we require from people when they replace a light pole.
That would be correct, yes.
But that would be part of it. Okay, so it, uh, back to the item about City Hall, it didn't mention seismic, um, retrofit.
No, but it will when, when we discuss the alternatives, right?
That would be considered also?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's go on to the next set of items on twenty-one, and, uh, we're going on from sustainability and now we're on transportation. So we have, uh, a pilot for adaptive traffic signaling, twenty-two, the multimodal traffic count in twenty-three, the Regional Transformative Transit Projects Initiative. Vice Mayor Chow, your, your hand is still up. Did you mean to ask questions on this at this point?
It's left over, but I can start with the question.
Well, let me, let me go on to Councilmember Moore then, so you can collect your questions.
Okay, um, real quick, uh, it seems to me that items twenty-one and twenty-two, so I need this clarified. It seems to me that, uh, uh, Public Works or, um, or Public Works combined with IT would be, could do this on their own purview and that this doesn't need to have us involved with it. Uh, so I'd like to have that clarified. And then on item twenty-three, this one is so huge and ambiguous, I, I just don't even know what to, to do with this as an item, so that, it'll need some discussion when, when we get to that. But the twenty-one and twenty-two, do we really need to be, uh, um, micromanaging this? Because that's what it feels like.
Okay, great. Let's, uh, let's hear from, um, our, our Director of IT, Bill Mitchell, who has his camera on.
Thank you, Darcy. Uh, Councilmember Moore, you're absolutely correct. Uh, currently, Public Works is working collectively with IT on these projects. Um, we appreciate your assistance, but we do not require it.
Great, thank you for the, uh, the brevity and, and pithiness of the answer. Um, and then with regard to the other comment that Councilmember Moore made, um, which I think was also in the form of question, i- is this, is this really something that we should be taking on the work plan given the, uh, scope of the, uh, projects identified here? Uh, Director Lee, you have your camera on, as well as, uh, Chris Correa from your department.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor. You know, like, because, uh, transportation is a goal of the council, that is why this is here. Because as many of you have witnessed, and you're on the VTA board and the PAC, we're very much engaged. Staff is, and we will continue to be, uh, this is here just to, just because of the importance of that mission, of the big goal, continuously.
I, I mean, it's certainly adequately described as a large project size. I mean, if there was um, a, a, a more expansive, uh, descriptor, then we should probably use that. Um, Chris, did you have anything to add to Director Lee's commentary there?
No, other than I just wanted to note that many of these larger, kind of regional projects were included in the, um, MTC competition, um, called the Horizon Initiative. Um, and I, I believe there was a previous, um, request made by council to it, to keep these included, um, to keep the council abreast, um, of that, that we're tracking these projects.
Right. And, um, re- and remind me, we didn't get any funding for any of those items, right, when applied for, for the MTC funding that you're referring to?
That's, that's correct, although Stevens Creek, um, corridor, um, did move forward, that was a, an, uh, submission by the City of San Jose.
Right. Okay, um, Councilmember Wade?
Um, yes, I have a couple of questions on twenty-one and twenty-two. Do we do this in collaboration with our neighboring cities? Because, you know, like, Deansa goes through Santiago all the way to Saratoga, and Stevens Creek goes through West San Jose. Um, do we do, you know, traffic signaling this? We don't do it ourselves. Do we work with our neighboring cities to make sure it's a flow through the force?
Councilmember Wade, that, that's a great question. Currently, we do not. Uh, this is not a regional solution at this point, simply because the, the different cities haven't agreed upon a solution. So this is simply a pilot to see the value of the multimodal and adaptive traffic signaling. If it true, truly pans out to be viable, then we start working with them and say, this is what we found. These are the results that look good, and we would suggest that you partner with us and move forward.
Okay, thank you, because, um, like, number twenty-one is, the budget's two-hundred forty-five thousand dollars. That's a pretty big budget. Um, so I, I, I would think it, if you want to, want to go through the whole traffic, we can just fix Cupertino, I have probably have to fix it regionally, so, that's my question. And, and I do think number twenty-three, um, should be on the work program continuously because we do want regional, um, transportation planning, we won't be part of it, so, yeah, that's just my comment.
Okay, thank you, and, and actually, um, maybe we should try to zoom out a little bit to capture the, the budget and the, uh, the commission column on, on this spreadsheet. Great. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, that's my question. It's, the regional transportation item, shouldn't that be under the planning commissions' provision? Even though they didn't request it, but then it should be under their provision, right?
I, I don't believe that would be under their charter.
Uh-huh. That's part of the general plan, no?
Well, they, we, we go to, we go to the Planning Commission annually for a general planning performance on any capital improvement project that may result, and, and they do have a voice on that, um, but otherwise, no.
Yeah, so, so that's the problem, we don't have the transportation commission.
Well, you know, ma- ma- many, if not all of our transportation projects have, have a, you know, they're complete streets with bike, with all multimodal bike and pedestrian, and, and so they are going to, um, predominantly to our bike and ped commission.
Okay.
I think planning commission's charter does include transportation. I remember I, you know, read the, the.
I think it's, I think it's the bike-ped charter that also has a little bit of transportation, um, in their charter.
Right. So, you know, this, it's a good question. Let's not get into a debate about it here. Um, a- a- and we do have the, uh, work plan item with regard to examining the, the commission, um, identity, the, the potential additional commissions. Um, and you have called out transportation specifically. So, we do have Councilmember Moore with your hand up again. I, you know, I kind of hesitate to give you another bite of the apple here, you know, we're moving along, but a- at the same time, do you have a quick clarifying question, Councilmember Moore, or?
Have we scrolled on to item twenty-four with this shuttle bus?
Not yet. I just, I asked staff to, you know, zoom out so that we.
Okay, that's right now.
Other columns.
Yeah, okay, so I'm, I'm ready to look at twenty-four.
Okay, yeah, a- a- and so, um, maybe zoom in one tick so that we can just kind of see the text a little bit better. Okay, great. A- and then if we need to just, um, kind of vocally indicate the department, or, or, yeah, you could do that as well, just kind of slide over um, momentarily at the beginning. So let's scroll down to twenty-four through the items, twenty-four through twenty-six, it seems like. Um, great, and those departments are all Public Works, thank you very much. Uh, let's include Vision Zero, so we'll include item number twenty-seven here. So we go from shuttle bus, traffic congestion, the traffic garden, and Vision Zero. Um, so anyone have questions regarding that? Councilmember Moore, do you still have your hand up from your, oh, you, you had a question regarding twenty-four, uh, so, Councilmember Moore?
Okay, so this, we already had, it, it's my belief that we already had, the city council had already allocated the one-point-seven-five million to the Via Shuttle program, and that it was, uh, halted last year due to COVID, so i- i- is this a question for whether or not we're going to have it come back and allocate another one-point-seven-five million, or, or what is this exactly?
Uh, I'll take a shot at the beginning of that, how's that? Um, you are correct, it started pre-COVID and then stopped mid-COVID or part-COVID, and, um, we saved the majority of those dollars. Um, it's here because, uh, we need to figure out if the council supports relaunching the pilot when we're able, um, and restarting that. Um, the reason it was stopped is because the burn rate per day with regard to the numbers of people that we could move around in this kind of, uh, mode of op, mode of transportation was really minimal, it's like we could take one person at a time. So cost per trip became excruciatingly expensive. Um, and I believe we stopped it back in, I can't remember, maybe last May or even April. So, um, so you are correct on those ones.
Uh, so, Chris, you have your camera on. Did you want to follow up on the city managers?
I, I just wanted to, to mention, we, we, we ran the service, um, I believe, uh, with a light kind of COVID service through August, and we've been on, on pause, paused.
Okay, um, Councilmember Moore, did you have any other follow-up questions to your initial question?
Yes, is there any way, uh, I don't know if there's any, any interest in this, but, um, because we have surrounding cities which are trying to implement their own, uh, shuttle system, um, if there's any way that we could add on to this item um, to look at potentials, uh, potential inner-city partnerships, something like that.
It says, explore complementary opportunities to expand into other cities.
Okay, there, thank you, you already got it. Um, yeah.
We, we had already been in conversation with the City of Mountain View as well, very, everybody's very interested. Saratoga's interested. And of course, in our plan for world domination, we were talking to Apple about, do you really need your Cupertino connect at this point? So we'll see how it goes.
Uh, good, good, because my, my issue is with VTA is that they were, um, providing funding for, uh, different cities to do their own, um.
Yes.
Program, and then we've got duplication, and that duplication from each city going out and, you know, how are we going to do it? How much is it going to cost? Who's going to run it? We shouldn't all be duplicating this, and, and unfortunately, they approved, uh, to, to go ahead with that model. Um, so hopefully we can share costs or do something, uh, to make it make more sense.
Okay, we have Vice Mayor Chow with her hand up. Vice Mayor Chow?
So, uh, so the, for the shuttle bus, our, we still have an existing contract, right? If we stop, we, wouldn't we be violating the contract, or are we starting from scratch?
No, we are not starting from scratch. We have our contract in place, and basically what we've done is frozen it.
Mm-hmm, so basically then this is a, one of these required items, that way we'll do it anyway, right?
Just. No, not necessarily.
No?
It, it's a matter of, does, does the council want to restart it when the time comes?
But we have allocated the, the dollars, and we have a contract in place.
It's ready, right? We would never take those out, plus you would not, um, you probably would not want to give back or jeopardize the Measure B funds that were involved in this as well.
Yeah, that's why I thought this is, um, go anyway.
It, it's still, I mean, it has to be here because I need, I need confirmation that the, that the council wants to move forward with it.
Okay, and then the next one, traffic congestion map and, uh, identify solutions. This is the first time I've seen this item, so what is that? And it's not under any commission, so. And zero dollars, but it's large, what exactly?
I, I can take a stab at that, no? That was my request last year to address the traffic congestion that we have, main streets being Deansa Boulevard, uh, Stevens Creek, Homestead, and asking staff to give us, to quantify what capacity are those roads at? If we're going to have this huge, uh, complex at, uh, Valco and stuff, what are the streets that are our main arteries? At what capacity are there? And so this, this congestion map isn't in, uh, an effort to do that. Uh, I've been waiting for updates, and hopefully we get something. I mean, are those streets at ninety percent? Hundred and ten percent? I mean, we should know before, uh, the additional, uh, cars that show up, you know, with, with, uh, seven to twelve thousand, uh, people, so.
All right, so Director Lee has his camera on. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, and, and if it had not been for the changes in traffic just due to COVID, um, we, we would have had this, uh, completed this year. But, uh, it's, it's, we can't evaluate the, you know, the heat map, uh, in the current conditions.
But this is something the city does anyway, on, that you'll continue to monitor congestion and heat map?
This was a work plan item that I asked for last year.
Yeah, this was John's request.
Oh, so this is continued from last year?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so let's go on to our next set of items. So we have, uh, twenty, it looks like twenty, was, was twenty-eight numbered, or? Maybe it was skipped. Okay, um, now we're on, uh, the next tab, is that right?
Um, that's twenty.
Let me take a quick look at the, uh.
So twenty-eight is skipped.
Should still be transportation, right? So this is, uh, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Yeah, twen- those like twenty-eight is skipped.
Yeah, and thirty, thirty-one is repeated, so it seems like, uh, that error was, uh,
Oh.
kind of fixed with that, in, in the manner of speaking.
Sorry, we did it very quickly.
No, no worries, you, you know, you, you're, it actually kind of evened out. So twenty-nine, uh, well, twenty-eight through thirty-one effectively, I guess, um, with, uh, the, the numbers being off on the first three there. Uh, any, any questions here? Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up?
Yeah, so, uh, I, I did want to make a comment about Vision, Vision Zero, or, or it's question, comment. Um, it's got zero dollars, um, put on it, um, and it seems like the next, uh, you know, three items are elements of Vision Zero. Um, and, so, to me, I, I, you know, Vision Zero is, is, is a great concept. Um, however, it seems like you're already moving towards Vision Zero, just not labeling it Vision Zero, so I'm not really sure. It, it, it concerns me because I've got, you know, votes to be, to be casting, so that, that part concerns me. Um, and also, is the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class Four Bike Lane project, is that already in the, the CIP? Um, and lastly, I'm not really sure with this building code assessment for facilities that encourage bicycle commun- uh, commuting. Um, what are you, what is that looking to, to have, um, specifically? So that's like, we're going to change the muni code? Okay.
Okay, um, would anyone care to respond to Councilmember Moore's comments and questions?
Yeah, Mr., Mr. Mayor, I can, I can take that question for, uh, Councilmember Moore. Good evening, this is David Stillman, Transportation Manager. Uh, so Vision Zero, um, Councilmember Moore, you're absolutely right, it's, it's just a, um, it's a general program, it's a, it's a philosophy that has to be defined further. It's a philosophy that has to be defined further in order to determine how we want to make it applicable for Cupertino. So a Vision Zero policy or program involves many elements in terms of collecting data, collaboration with stakeholders, finding ways to manage speeds, community engagement, that sort of thing. So the purpose of the work plan item is to define all of those parameters to come up with a cohesive program that we can then actually move forward with. It may or may not involve some of those items that are listed on the work plan, but we won't know that until we, you know, staff works with the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission and the community to actually identify the elements. For your second question, the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class Four Bike Lanes, short answer, yes. The design has already been, funding for the design has already been allocated by city council for the next segment, Phase Two of that, of that project, which is Wolf Road to Highway eighty five. And we'll be making a funding request in the CIP to construct part of that segment in the coming fiscal year. So that is included in the CIP. And then your final question, the building code assessment for facilities, that was an item that was discussed at the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission that we're not recommending inclusion in the work plan. And that would involve both public work staff and planning staff doing a review of various planning ordinances, general plan requirements, et cetera, in order to determine holistically what has been, what the requirements are for new developments to provide facilities that encourage bicycle commuting, whether it be facilities within the building like showers, lockers, that kind of thing, or facilities external to the building such as bike racks, bike lockers. So it would be just a matter of compiling all of that information, seeing what all these requirements are that the city has and making recommendations in terms of any changes potentially in order to encourage further or acquire even new developments to provide facilities that encourage bicycling.
Okay, and then there was a question with regard to whether the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class Four Bike Lanes has been incorporated or is anticipated to be incorporated into the CIP?
Yes, there will, there will be a funding request from Public Works to include the construction of the second phase in the CIP for next fiscal year. The design of the second phase, we currently have funding for that and we're moving forward with that design at this time.
Okay, and are those funds anticipated to be part of the funds from from Apple for their funding of various infrastructure for bike projects?
Apple provided funding for the first phase of the Stevens Creek Class Four Bike Lane project. I don't believe they've allocated funding or provided funding for the second phase.
I see. So what does that mean that it will be incorporated as part of operations if it hasn't actually been approved yet to be placed inside of our budget?
There'll be requests from Public Works to fund that through our CIP program, the construction of the project.
Oh, okay. So it would be placed into the CIP program, but not necessarily prioritized as something that is teed up to be implemented because of the funding issue. So if I'm remembering correctly, we categorized in, I think, A, B, C, and D or something like that, right? And then the A-level items are fully funded and going forward. So what you're saying is that it would be part of the CIP, but not necessarily in the classification of funded items. Is that, is that correct?
Right. We'll be asking for council's authorization for construction in the next phase in our CIP request for next year.
Okay.
And so if council authorizes it, then we will be proceeding with construction.
All right. So as of right now, it's not part of the CIP. It will be added to the CIP?
For you to consider on May fourth.
On a funded category, is that correct? Or are we being asked to possibly include it in the CIP?
Yeah, you will. On May fourth, we'll have our study session and you'll see that as a recommendation for funding for construction. And then when we come back, June eighteenth, council will then, you know, either authorize that funding or they won't.
Okay, okay. All right. So we have a hand up from Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, questions?
Hi. So regarding Vision Zero, I think in Sunnyvale, they have a Vision Zero plan, right? So if we go ahead with this item, does that mean we will be, there will be a cost of actually developing a plan? I think it involves also a technical analysis of where the accidents are so that we can target the most risk, dangerous areas in the city and address those concerns. Is that the plan we'll eventually do? So this will be a funky year item?
The current proposal within the work plan is just to develop the plans and policies that are going to drive the Vision Zero plan for Cupertino. Ultimately, once we've put those policies and plans together, there'll be a certain amount of data collection required, as I mentioned, community outreach. And the end result of that could very well be improvements around the city that would require funding. I couldn't speak to what those might be at this time. Those would come out of the program. And we would, of course, return to council at a later time should we identify those types of improvements that we would implement under the Vision Zero program.
So the first year, it will just be done in-house and to come up with just studying it. Okay. And then for the building code assessment, I'm guessing to actually change the building code, it would be costly. However, it might still be nice to come up with a list of bicycle-friendly facilities like showers, locks, and parking. So is that what the commission intends to do? To provide a list of nice-to-have biking facilities that maybe we can require, but we can encourage the new development to include them, or even existing ones to include?
Yeah, that would conceivably have been part of that work item. So we would have taken an inventory of what the current requirements are and match that with, say, a list, as you're saying, of what some nice-to-haves would be and seeing how we can, you know, integrate those two.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so number thirty, a little bit, I think the terminology here. The Common Road Bridge is, you know, seems to be pretty popular with the community. But what it's, the way it's worded here, encourage staff to fund and proceed. So we already approved the feasibility study. And so I'm thinking this should really be that city staff is to bring to us the design process, you know, where it'd be fifty percent, seventy-five percent, hundred percent. And in general, the design aspect that they'd be proposing, that's the way I would have expected this thing to be worded. So that we know that that's what they're going to be doing. And then I also wonder, so it says estimated budget. Is the two million dollar budget, you know, relevant for today? Or should it be updated and revised, even though it's going to come to us for approval? You know, is that two million dollar, I mean, shouldn't there be a caveat that this was two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and nineteen estimate? And doesn't reflect twenty twenty-one? So those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilman Willie. I think a couple of things to note on the Common Road Bridge. You know, firstly, you know, I appreciate the public's, you know, support of any of our projects. And so my comments aren't that I'm anti-this project at all. I'd like to build them all, but there's just a time in which we can do that. This project did rank as a Tier One on the pedestrian plan and I believe a Tier Two in the bike plan. But we've got, you know, other higher priority projects that, Stevens Creek Boulevard, we just mentioned is one. And the construction of that is costly. You'll see that when we come to council on May fourth. So if we were to consider this project for this coming fiscal year, we would be taking it out of turn with other higher priority projects that went through a very community-involved process with both, you know, with the bike and the ped plan. So, and that's how the feasibility study got on the work plan, you know, a few years ago, was it was taken out of turn. And of course, that can be council's prerogative to do that. And if we get that feedback, then of course, we would be bringing it back. And another item to consider on this project is we don't, we have not yet secured the right-of-way on the north side of the bridge. And so we would not want to, you know, I wouldn't be recommending proceeding with design until we had all the right-of-way.
So wouldn't it be important for you to put those notes on this item? So at least we're aware of it, that the property rights have not been secured yet and that the higher priority projects are ahead of this? Because otherwise, you know, otherwise, you know, we read it here and other than the terminology or the way it's worded, you know, I would think that this is something that's going to get worked on this year. And, you know, if it's, you know, so I'm still a little bit confused as to, you know, twenty twenty-two.
Sure. Well, this is here because it was, the Bike and Ped Commission had requested it to be here. And it was just their wording and so that council can see what is there. So it's staff recommendation that it not be in the work plan for next year because we have other higher priority projects. And you'll see that come out in the May fourth study session.
But we wanted to make sure we included all commission proposals as that is what council requested at the last meeting.
Okay, so we are at number thirty-one now. And.
So, sorry, one more question.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay. Thank you. We really appreciate that you included all the proposals in one document. That makes it easier. For Common Bridge, I'm guessing, in case the council includes this item for next year, then it just means the staff will continue to pursue acquisition of the land investment that we need. But if we don't prioritize that, nothing will be done. Then when the time comes, maybe in one or two years, we would still not have the land that's necessary to build Common Bridge, right? So it's my understanding, right, that this is just to say, let's continue to get, to make progress. Doesn't mean it will get done, built this year.
Right. Yeah, so my recommendation, if council wants us on the work plan, that it would be to direct us to acquire the right-of-way.
And so how long that would take or my training efforts would take?
It would depend on the property owner and if, so far, they're resistant to sell the right-of-way to the city. So it's just how far we would want to take it.
Is the property owner a homeowner or a different entity?
Yes, it's a property owner, a residential property.
I see. Okay, well, we're kind of at a natural breaking point. And we have been going for another two hours. We're at the beginning of the housing tab and we have another one after this. It's roughly halfway through these fifty-nine items. But I also want to let everyone know that I do plan on breaking the meeting at midnight if we're not at a resolution there with regard to prioritization. So it will probably need to be continued to another date at that point. But right now, let's take a five-minute break. Let's reconvene at ten forty-two. It's ten thirty-six right now. Let's go on to item number, I believe we are on item number thirty-three because of the fact that we have thirty-one and thirty-two up, which were the, right?
No, we were at twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. That was misnumbered. So now.
Right. And we had thirty-one, we had part of thirty-one. So let's scroll back up to thirty-one. Options to develop ELI. Yeah, I mean, it was, it was on the, so let's start with thirty-one and thirty-two and thirty-three here since we're now on a new tab, Housing. Okay, so let's start with Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so this is kind of a question for thirty-one and thirty-four. And it's my concern about how this dovetails in with the housing element update. And just any, because we're talking about the next three in a cycle and this is already going to be coming to council as a requirement. Yeah, so any comments on that?
We have our Director of Planning, Ben Fu. Welcome, Ben.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Moore, I'll take a stab at answering that question for you. Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. So the affordable housing strategies is one where we, this has been around for, I believe, a couple of years. And we started with examining different methods of where we can increase our stock in a variety of different housing affordable, affordable housing limits, levels. We, if you recall, we did a BMR linkage fee study in twenty nineteen that we were able to complete midway through the pandemic. Council, through your vision, and adopted it and increased the inclusionary requirement to twenty percent for ownership units. So that effort took a little bit of time and, or effort. So, and so post that, now we're looking at a different, linking up with different efforts such as density bonus, such as housing element updates. Of course, linked into the arena, as you mentioned, and Councilmember Moore. And with that, we obviously with the housing element, we'll be looking at selecting a consultant. We're in the process of preparing that RFP with this help, assistance with the CEO, of course. And so these items are, as you mentioned, thirty-one, thirty-four are somewhat linked in that it's much a bigger picture than just simply producing a unit type for a particular demographic. So, and I see, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up again. I'm sorry, Mayor, you want to call?
No, no, please. You're, I have questions with Councilmember Moore. So, Councilmember Moore, did you have follow up here?
Yeah, one more. Item thirty-two, options for developing ELI housing. I see that Mary Avenue is suggested. But we did just recently have a study session talking about the Danza Boulevard Outback location. And in that, in that discussion, I made a request that, you know, if the Board of Supervisors is going to have the county purchase this, that they would consider having ELI housing there. So I guess it's a question for staff as well. Can we also add in the Outback site as a potential, you know, additional, complimentary or alternative, just a location for ELI housing? And I don't know, I think they're meeting again. So perhaps just to stay on top of that purchase as well.
Sure. And I would look for the mayor and council's leadership on that if you want to modify this item, to add that specifically, that's fine. Some of these items are quote-unquote projects. You can easily argue that it could be operational, right? Just like a permit, a development permit that comes in. We'll have to sort of process that. But for heightened visibility and accountability for us and for myself, I think placing that or modifying that as an item will help. So it's entirely up to you.
And potentially also the Burn Avenue recent purchase could complement that as well.
It could, yeah. Also too, is, we're also as operation purposes and functions, we're constantly reaching out to the community. You know, our housing division has grown from one person to two. So we have a little bit of capacity to kind of do some outreach. And so there are a couple of other things that we're looking into right now that unfortunately. And so there are a couple of other things that we're, we're, we're looking into right now that, that unfortunately, we probably shouldn't go into too much detail on. But yeah, so there, there are projects like, like Burn Ave, like Mary, happy to put that on there since we already worked on that anyway.
Okay, great. Thank you, Director Fu. We'll go on to Councilmember Wei for questions.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'm glad Councilmember Moore actually mentioned the Outback State and the Burn. But this particular item on Mary Avenue, I think it's been, you know, a couple of residents talk about it. It's been on the map for a while. So I think this is a very specific item for Mary Avenue that we would like, if we or the council approve, approve it, would like to work on it. I think it's, this is pretty specific. We do, you know, keep Burn in mind. And of course, when Outback State property is being purchased by the county, I think we'll work with them. So I have a question on this number on the Mary Avenue. So it's ELI housing. And where did this moderate income housing got, got put into it?
Well, I'm sure that was part of the discussion during the last round of our program.
Okay, because of all the comments I didn't hear, I only hear ELI housing, but not moderate income housing. So it is part of being considered?
Well, if, for, for any sort of these, these type of projects, you can look at either just do an ELI specific or you can include ER, ER, ELI as, as a primary focus. But you supplement that with other sort of income level housing, as long as the zoning permits it. And obviously, this, the Mary project would, would require general plan authorization process. So it's, it's, there's some process attached to that, yeah.
All right, thank you. So I do like it if this is a standalone item because, you know, this, to, to make it happen, I think it needs to be a standalone item. And I see the affordable housing strategy as a totally different things. So are we talking about thirty-five already, Mayor Paul, or not?
We are on thirty-three and up to thirty-four, but not to thirty-five, yeah.
Oh, up to thirty-four, good. So thirty-four to me is the Rena process. Is, is that how, did I interpret correctly? Okay, so I get it by because that's what we have to do. All right, thank you. That's all my question.
All right, Councilmember Willie.
So, number thirty-two also, I'd like to follow up with that. Yeah, I, I see this Mary being, you know, really important. So, you know, standalone, I'm not, I'm not really needing it to be a standalone. The Outback being affordable housing. My, my main contention on both of these is that we get quarterly updates. So that we really can be sharing the status with the community when we, when we're doing our community engagement. And so quarterly update on, on both of them. You know, that these are both pretty important, affordable housing, ELI housing, and the progress that's being made. Because, you know, a couple of years into it, and yet, you know, we're not able to, to really share anything. So again, a quarterly update, I, I think is imperative.
If, if I may, Mayor, just a quick respond to, to, to Willie. So, so we will certainly plan for more, more updates, as you imagine, in the pandemic. It's a little challenging because we have a lot of projects going on. So, but with that, I think Katie had mentioned earlier that we do have a external portal that, that it's also attached, as your attachment C, that does show the progress of these projects. I believe it's also online. Maybe Katie can correct me from one, but that, that's our way of showing up-to-date process for, for.
Yeah, I read, I read through Attachment C and that's great. But, you know, I, I would really like, you know, more of a real-time update, you know, quarterly. I mean, just like industry does, you know, project updates. And, you know, letting us know that, hey, these are the milestones that we're targeting. We're, we're targeting, you know, to have something submitted on this day. The construction would take this long. I mean, updates so that we can really be, you know, working the issue with our community, letting them know, you know, where we're at with these. So, so I, I, I do, the Attachment C is great. But, you know, it, it really needs to be on something this important. You know, it really needs to be more visible. Transparency, as the resident brought up earlier.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm all for transparency. We'll certainly work on bringing some of these highly important subjects back for, for updates.
And just to clarify, the dashboard is updated quarterly. So that will be. The, the, the two dashboards that are relatively new are the dashboard to track the work program and the public dashboard to track CIP projects and updates like this. So the public, if they're interested, can take a look at that and we will find a way to provide other quarterly updates.
And Madam City Manager, where do the links to these dashboards live on our city website? Are they on the homepage or do we go to planning? Or where, where do, where do members of the public find these webpages?
So for, for the City Work Program Dashboard, that's on the council webpage. So if you go to council and then on the sidebar, you can go to City Work Program. And the short link is Cupertino.org/cityworkprogram, all one word.
Great. Thanks very much. All right, let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow for questions. And Vice Mayor Chow, if you're asking questions now, we can't actually.
So for affordable housing strategies, the description did not mention the BMR linkage study or the inclusionary percentage we have included. Shouldn't that be included so it's more clear? And the second, for the Mary Avenue, I certainly am happy to see that this project actually is ongoing. But we have not actually heard about this project at all on any city council meeting, except the mayor mentioned in his state of the city address. This seems to be abnormal. So I don't know what should be the process. I'm happy this is ongoing, but it appears, I don't know how much is the involvement of the city staff. Was there no involvement? So it wasn't a work problem item that we get updates on?
So Ben, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the actual project itself, the city has been minimally, I won't say minimally involved.
I mean, Mary, yeah.
Yeah, we've provided them information, but the, the work really is about making sure that that piece of city property is rezoned and then a map provided to ensure that people know it's available for that. And then the public process would probably be some sort of RFP process.
Yeah, I would just, if I may, Mayor, just to add to City Manager's comments. First of all, the affordable housing strategies in terms of, to respond to Vice, Vice Mayor Chow's comments about sort of providing a report back on, on some of these completions. That was, I believe, I, I could be wrong, that was highlighted in the previous version. It's not highlighted here because the process has been completed and evolved and moved on. But we can certainly do a better job of highlighting that in, in our, our future updates. Again, the, the portal does show that as well. Now, in terms of the, the Mary Ave, I will only correct the City Manager's opinion that we, we spend more than a minimal amount of time. And that's also with the city engineer systems as well. There is some, I will say confusion or complication around boundaries of the property that took a little bit of time to resolve. We also had to use a little bit of our, our funding to, to produce a survey to verify those, those informations. So there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that, that I'll, I'll take responsibility for. Didn't feel like that level of detail needed to be presented to, to council. Again, certainly I, I, I hear you and, and we're, I'll do a better job in, in packaging that next time we'll come back for, for updates. But there's been a significant amount of work done in the background just to get to where, just to get to where it could be a, a project to be processed through GPA process or RFP process to, to seek any other additional sort of fair advertising process to, to seek out developers. So it's, it's a little bit of background work to get to this point even.
That is great. However, I think such updates should have been provided to the council outside of this annual update process. And it should be provided maybe before a significant amount of staff time is invested.
Yeah, I mean, like I mentioned, I apologize for that. That's on me, right? So what, what, what we can do is we'll look at other ways to provide that kind of update. Whether it's in this process, it sounds like you prefer outside this process, we can certainly do that. We can do memos, we can do study session, we can, we'll find a way to.
Yeah, this is a good thing that we are doing, right?
Sure, sure.
And so, and I agree that maybe this item should also mention the Outback site because that's one of the items that we'll, we will be looking at in the next year also. And then for item thirty-three, city plan for to end homelessness. And I see that the objective is, mentions something, one thing very specific, to provide mobile hygiene services. However, the title is city plan. Do we plan to develop an actual plan? Hygiene service is just one example of something we might do. It's not just one objective, because right now it looks like this is the one objective for the project.
My understanding, and again, CDD will correct me on anything I say that's wrong. Once the, once the city adopted, once the city council adopted the county plan to end homelessness, then that triggers the city to develop its own plan that supports the county plan. Providing mobile services is one, perhaps exemplar or example of something we would provide. The plan is not fully developed. This is the request of time to work on that plan.
So the, this item is to develop that city plan, not just the hygiene.
Yeah, I don't know why it's honed in on this.
So maybe that's just one example. Because the county plan is very vague, so we actually need a concrete city plan.
Yeah, I apologize. I think that, I think that the hygiene language was perhaps discussed at a prior, prior council meeting. So we just, just added in there. But council in this setting wished to modify that, that's, that's fine.
The three hundred thousand will cover just the hygiene services or including the development of the plan with community issue?
Originally, it was to also to include the development of plan as well, yes.
Okay, great. And then item thirty-four, it says study session for the Rena cycle. However, I believe the deadline for Rena is end of next year. That means the general plan amendment should have been done by the end of next year, ideally by September. So that gives you time. That means that this item should really be general plan amendment or rezoning, not just study session. Right? Another item.
Well, yes, again, Vice Mayor Chow, this is some sort of culmination of, of the prior discussions. And so if, if, if council wishes for this to kind of evolve, at that time, it was discussed to provide study session to not just educate the public, but also keep a status, status update for the council on where we are in terms of Rena cycle, where the state is on, on the, on the process. So obviously, we've gone above and beyond that now in terms of the process. So, yeah, we can certainly modify that.
Study session for this year is appropriate. But for next year, we need moving to the implementation to actually identify sites possible rezoning and general plan amendment by end of next year, right?
Yes, yes.
That should be the item. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll note two things from Vice Mayor Chow's questions. First, I, I actually did not mention the Mary Avenue project in my State of the City speech. There was a mention of the Westport project, but I, I did not mention this one. So it's actually even more of a first impression for city council for, for, for this project, for the ELI. And then second, I think the Rena cycle goes until the end of twenty twenty-three. So it, it would be not the end of next year, but the end of the year after next year, calendar year-wise, so. Just, just, just to clarify that, our current Rena cycle goes from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three. And if you look at the finish date on the next to next to last column, it's twelve thirty, twenty twenty-three. Unless that's some kind of typographical error.
Wait, could, could staff clarify what's the deadline to submit the housing element?
Yeah, so the, so the timelines are, are a little bit interesting because the, the eight-year cycle doesn't necessarily line up exactly with the, the start of this, the, the cycle, the plan. So we'll have to make sure everything is buttoned up and approved at the end of twenty twenty-two. So, so that will be effective as January of twenty twenty-three. But I believe the cycle actually starts that year. Could get anybody in that.
The deadline to submit a housing element is January twenty twenty-three. So we should be ready by the end of twenty.
Yeah, so we're working, we're working on that, right? We're, we're, we're in the process of identifying a consultant to come on board, as you know. The Planning Division has five, for the bulk of the pandemic, has five planners. We're able to add a couple more backfill. So it's been, it's been a little challenging. But we're, we're able to, we have a draft RFP, we're going through with the attorneys to, to make sure that we have all the language buttoned up. I think the county, other cities in our region are in the same process and the same bill as well. So we're kind of working together to, to go through this process.
So, so perhaps the finish date should be adjusted to twenty twenty-two after all, right? Because we're not going to be working on this going on into calendar year twenty twenty-three if our allocations need to be identified essentially by the end of next year.
Yes, Mayor, we'll make that.
Just to, yeah. So we're in the middle of our current cycle and, and that does, that does comport with our prior cycles allocations, since we did make them at the end of twenty fourteen, that, that I do recall. All right, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up again. Do you have any brief follow-up question?
Yes, I do. So when I'm looking at, and I'm just trying to track the, the history here. When I'm looking at Attachment C, this is with regards to item thirty-two. And I want to understand the history here for, when I, when I look at Attachment C, it says engage with philanthropic organizations to find a way to build moderate-income and ELI housing units for developmentally disabled and engage with Habitat and engage with Habitat for Humanity. It doesn't say anything about the Rotary. It doesn't say anything about Mary Avenue. And then when I look at the Housing Commission Proposals for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Two, Attachment D, project task, again, engage with philanthropic organizations to find a way to build moderate-income and ELI housing units for developmentally disabled and engage with Habitat for Humanity or other nonprofit to build ownership housing. Nothing about Mary Avenue, nothing about the Rotary. In fact, we were not, actually not even naming Rotary in here. So am I missing a page here for how this now morphed into Mary Avenue? And I'm a little surprised that I got any pushback about having two other sites, Burn Avenue and, and the Outback site piled on because that, you know, my suggestion is to include even more. So, one, how did, how did this become a Mary Avenue Rotary project? And why are these, or, or is council amenable to having these other sites added in for, for inclusion? Because I would think that, that more opportunities would be something we'd all welcome.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just a quick, okay, Councilmember Moore, good, good questions. So in terms of the Attachment C, it just are a way of kind of shrinking the language. As you can see, in the spreadsheet, it's fairly long. So we're just kind of squeezing it into a minimal number of words to fit that table. And in terms of not identifying a Rotary or a particular developer is because we want to make sure there's a fair sort of process for a project. It's a city property, so it hasn't necessarily been sort of sold in a particular way. And there's some legal considerations to that as well. That's why we didn't identify Rotary or any other potential developers in, in our, our description here.
Okay, great. We have Councilmember Wei with a hand raised. Councilmember Wei, did you have a quick follow-up question?
Yes, I have a quick follow-up because Outback would be great, but company hasn't bought it yet, so that's why I didn't include it. And Burn Avenue is kind of new to me, so I don't know anything about the Burn Avenue status. That's why I only. That's why I only mentioned Mary Avenue, because this specific item seems to be just on Mary Avenue. Would be great if we have other items that include Burn and Outback or put them together, I have no objection with that.
Okay, uh, very briefly, Councilmember Moore, before we go on to our next set.
I, I'm, I have a kind of a, I don't know if we have any of our legal staff on hand, but now I have kind of a legal question. Because if you're offering up public lands for development, um, there we go, perfect. If we're offering up public land for development, it seems that that should have the.
Public process.
Yeah, like a bidding and, and uh, yes, so I'm a little, little concerned, I'm a lot concerned, actually, yeah.
So I did mention, I did mention we'll have to go through an RFP process.
Yeah, I, I believe I mentioned that as well, the next step is the RFP process, like the consultant, and, and. So that, that is part of the process, which is why we didn't highlight that particularly, because there, there's a, there's a legal process for that.
Um, so uh, then my concern is that, that I would probably um, mention uh, on city-owned property. And I would either line out um, along Mary Avenue. Or uh, change to such as Mary Avenue, Burn and um, any other potential sites, uh, something like that. Uh, and, and make it um, uh, kind of safer on, on part of what the city is describing. Um, I don't know, maybe that's not necessary, but I, I would, uh. Because you're, you're, this, this is out of, kind of out of the blue, identifying a city property. When, to me, you should go back and say, uh, identify city properties, which is another item. Identify city properties for uh, potential um, ELI housing. And then throw in the, the whole um, array of potential sites, you know, be it Burn Avenue and Mary. There might, there might be even more interesting um, sites that the city i- has beyond this one. And then um, I just want to bring up, uh, because I, the uh, green waters, uh, the Green Stormwater Infrastructure Plan. Um, had identified, um, unfortunately, I want to mention this, had identified Mary Avenue Green Belt and Trail Project. And it says create a wide bio-retention enhanced green belt on the west side of Mary Avenue, exactly where they're trying to put this project. Include a pervious multi-use pathway to accommodate bicyclists, pedestrians, strollers and joggers. Install bio-retention tree wells at optimal inter- intervals on the east side, um, et cetera. So uh, it, it was identified for another project, and so I'm a little concerned about some of these um, con- conflicts. And how that's going to be handled.
So I would just address um, the evolution of the naming of this particular project. Uh, I think uh, way in the beginning, we, we had a more abbreviated version um, through discussions. Uh, I believe it was a prior council sort of, I don't know, I can't recall whether it's one council member or, or not. Uh, so this, this, the naming of the project has kind of evolved a little bit. But I, I look to the, to the current council for your, your direction and leadership, if you want to modify that or, or per Councilmember Moore's suggestions.
Okay, thank you, uh, Director Fu, Councilmember Moore, and we will go on to the next set of items at this point. Uh, so let's start with thirty-five and uh, seems like it's the last item on housing. Let, let's cover that first, a subcommittee to identify land for affordable housing. Does anyone have questions? Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is up, this is again thirty-five only.
So this one is uh, proposed by Housing Commission, but not recommended by staff. So this is a, a separate cat- category. So that means if we think this project, we would like Housing Commission to work on this one. We need to provide higher priority, otherwise it will be dropped, because it's not recommended by staff. Is that how that works?
Uh, let's take, uh, uh, well, first of all, Vice Mayor Chow, why are you saying that it is not recommended by staff?
This is, uh, remember that last time in the study session last time, there were a few items. Not included in the staff recommended list. And so if you can see on item five, above item, item thirty-five, there is a subtitle. Uh, Commission Proposals Items Not Already Included Above. You'll see this kind of separation between items above and below. The above are the ones that staff recommended in, and included in this, the first version of the work.
I see, okay, so, so this is a, a, a catch-all for the items that were.
Kind, kind of like, kind of like common bridge, it's not in a staff recommended list, but it's in the commission list. So it's a, a first subtitle, so I just want to clarify. Um, so if we would like to uplift certain item like this, we need to upvote it or how that works.
So all items are going to be. Uh, all items are being considered holistically, collectively, all together in this list of fifty-nine. So that's why we're asking for rankings and how they fall, and those rankings will help us determine how to draft the workforce work program.
Okay, great, thank you. By the way, this is the very first time we are going through this item by item, the work program. Yeah.
Okay, um, Councilmember Way.
Um, yes, I want to ask a clarification question on this item. When I read it, I feel that this would be in the Rena study. Like, we are, the Rena study is going to identify uh, housing sites, including affordable housing sites. Is, is that a correct assumption?
That's true, that's true. Uh, however, I believe uh, the Housing Commission wanted to have a subcommittee to identify properties today.
Um, no, I, I talked to the Housing Commission members, their intention is like this, they are realtors. So they are, they want to use their own time to seek out properties. That might be a good candidate for affordable housing. So these sites may only may not be identified in the next Rena cycle, but they, this is something they would like to do. So they propose that.
Because it didn't say that, so I, I thought since Rena is already covering it, that, that's when I was reading it. I feel that this would be an overlapping thing that we will be doing, so, okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah, it's, they want to use their own personal time to do this, yeah.
Okay, um, it looks like those are our questions on item thirty-five, the last item of housing. Uh, we're now to our last tab, which is quality of life, uh, if we could scroll up, start at thirty-six. All right, so now we have thirty-six through, uh, let's call it forty-one. So that forty-one recruits the Parks and Recreation Department Strategic Plan as well, uh, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, um, so for item thirty-six, Lawrence Mitty estimated budget, eight point three million dollars. I thought that Apple gave us about eight million dollars for a park. Um, when they didn't provide, I think, a one-acre park approximately uh, at, uh, at the headquarters location. So I'm wondering why, what this budget, um, what this budget is.
It is uh, the Apple funds, as you had mentioned, the developer fund that were provided for that project.
Okay, so to me, um, that should be crossed off. Because we already had that money budgeted and allocated specifically earmarked, I should say, for this. And it's, and it's not coming, it's not like money that's going to be, be spent now that we didn't already have allocated for it. Um, so I have a problem with that, because it seems like, because it's something we're due, um, to have.
This is budget for the projects, and except we're just displaying the information here. We're not asking for additional budget at this point in time.
Okay, so I was wondering perhaps if we could have staff somehow either, either star the estimated budget and, and, um. Yeah, and I think that would probably be for me ideal, if it, if there was an asterisk there and it was saying that, um, you know. But uh, um, the, a city engineer was saying, so you know, some, some verbiage to that effect. So to, to let people know that that, how that funding came about for it, seems fair.
Uh, that's a, that's a good, that's a good um, point. I mean, a lot of these items aren't, aren't budgeted yet, and there will be requests for funding.
Um, well, well, I have to, excuse me, Mayor Paul, just to, to, um. It, this brings up the point of Parkland equity in the city. And this, this lends the impression as though eight point three million dollars uh, of special allocation is being um, deposited. You know, to, to, to purchase this park, whereas there's, there's asks for improvements to other areas of the city. This is a very park-deprived portion of the city, as is uh, the, the north um, central part of the city as well. So I, I, to me, it's kind of a, it's, it's important um, to, to be clear about this. Um, and, and that when, when this park then needs to have uh, the, the, the actual plan put in place for it. And be built, um, that that is, that, that's really where the money is starting to be spent on this. Um, whereas we have other parks which are getting improved, which are already, you know, functioning, but getting um, further enhancements. Like whichever park gets, ends up having the, the full all-inclusive um, playground put at it. That's going to be going at an already, already built-out park that has um, has uh, oh, items there. That, you know, people are interested in, be it uh, uh, an existing playground at Jolly Man, which is merely being removed and upgraded. So uh, I would like to see a notation here, I think it, I think it is really important.
Right, and, and I would add to that, that in fact, that allocation has been made since uh, the calendar year two thousand and fifteen. So we're, we're actually looking at the, I think, seventh or eighth year. Uh, now that, that that budget has been in place, it's just simply been carrying over each year. Uh, as, as we haven't um, uh, acquired the land until, until this, you know, current um, fiscal year, so. But point well taken, you know, this is part of the park mitigation fee for Apple Park, which was uh, of course, on the eastern side of town. So I, I, I don't think that, I don't think that there is an explicit requirement. Um, that the park be uh, acquired in a particular part of the city. But certainly, when it comes to, to equity and park density and, and availability, it, it makes a lot of sense. Um, but, but there wasn't really a discussion along the line of possibly allocating that for a different part of the city. It was always a matter of whether we acquired this space or try to perhaps work with uh, one of our local school districts to acquire uh, other space. That's also uh, in the eastern side of, of, of the city. But you know, I, I agree with what you're saying, I mean, if, if you look at this, then you end up getting sort of an impression that. You know, certain amounts of uh, funding are, are on a par with others. Um, so let's take a look at questions from Councilmember Way at this point.
Uh, yes, I, I think it's wonderful to have acquired this park. My question is, uh, do we need to acquire additional land in adjacent to the park in order to develop it? Or do we have enough land to develop it?
We have enough land to develop it, and we've worked with the county to acquire construction access up of Lawrence Mitty. So we have access to the site for construction and improvements.
Okay, so this is uh, ready to go then?
Uh, not, not quite.
Not quite, um, we still need to, we're, we're putting together a specific plan that will have some community outreach. Um, we'll try and take uh, the community's input on what to construct there. Then we'll put together plans to construct it, and then we'll go and actually build it. Um, all of this, and, yeah, all of this in parallel with annexing property.
All right, thank you, I just want to know the status of it, thanks.
Yeah, you, you will see an item for this uh, at the May fourth study session uh, for the CIP.
Great, our next question is from Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, uh, same, same topic, you know, I'm real glad that this is actually on our work plan. Because I feel that that is our opportunity to, to give some guidance, you know, and so this is on our work plan. I, I would like to uh, request that we get quarterly updates and that we also have some idea what the target is. When, when would somebody first be able to walk through the closed gate? And start to, you know, enjoy uh, some of that access there? Six months, a year, two years? By all means, I think we should let everybody know what, what the future looks like. As opposed to a year or two years down the road, and we find out it's still another year or two years down the road. So quarterly updates have a target, you know, that it would first be open for the residents. Just as um, a place for them to walk, walk their dog, things like that. At some point then, there'd be a playground added, barbecues, uh, benches. So to me, that's pretty important, one other point for Councilman Way. You know, is it, is it uh, all secured and uh, ready to go? But in our previous discussions, the true access to that piece of land is very limited right now. It's the walkway that you first would have to go across the creek at like Barnhard Park. And then walk down, um, you know, quite a ways, a, a city block. Before you would then go through the uh, the closed gate. And so with that being said, our hope would be that one of those houses um, along Sterling. Would come up for sale and that that then could be replaced by an access point. Maybe um, you know, a half a dozen parking locations, parking spots and some paved walkway. So that the residents could then get direct access without having to go up to Barnhard Park and back. So I think all that needs to be, you know, kind of described, so that we really know what it is. This, it's not going to be just a drive-up park that, you know, you go like with uh, uh, or other parks. So I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Willie, for making that point. I, I had asked the city manager, in fact, that, that precise question and the follow-up was. I, I, I think, Debbie, you said you were going to check in with staff to identify particular properties that would be um. I, I, ideal, right, for that purpose, so.
But I think Councilmember Way's original question was, you know, can we do something with it yet, really? And we could, we can, as soon as the annexation process is completed.
Right, and I, no, my, my, my question was just a follow-up on.
Yeah.
Councilmember Willie's, and it, it just reminded me that, that I had asked that um, a, a little while back, right? And you, you were indicating that you were going to check in with staff um, as to uh, what would be ideal locations. I, I know there are a lot of things going around, but i- it's a good reminder at this point.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so we have, I believe Vice Mayor Chow um, hasn't asked questions on this set of items yet.
Okay, yeah, so the current budget for Lawrence Mitty is only for the purchase of the land, right? So once this annexed, do we still need additional budget for design?
No, the budget, the eight point three is for purchase and development of the property.
Okay, so that would include that. Then um, when, so next year, where we'll be um, doing outreach on what to do with this property?
Correct, we'll be uh, coordinating a specific plan for uh, what we plan to do with this, what type of improvements, theme, um, anything along those lines. The Parks and uh, Rec, yeah, um, department is, is currently working on trying to formulate the, the RFP for that. And we'll be working closely with them.
Or maybe like um, bike, biking uh, place where. I think if people are going there to practice biking skills, they won't, they probably won't mind the noise. Maybe a BMX bike, kind of facility.
I'm sure all of those option, no, I'm sure that option and many others will be studied with a specific plan.
Okay, and then um, I have regarding um, the budget item, I see that um, on this sheet, we see multiple items, right? I think for Meaty Park, uh, Blackberry and um, and the, the rest, development accountability. Since these are all items carried over from pre- previous year, so they are all already allocated, right? But then item forty-two and forty-three, I think they are the new items. So that means they will be newer location that you are requesting budget for.
Uh, let's not skip to items that we don't see in front of us, you, we, we're at forty-one.
Oh, okay, forty-one, okay, then, so these are, are, are all, are already budgeted in the current year's budget. And we just didn't finish the work, right?
I, I think that. I, I think that's right. And to continue it, of course, we would need your ranking.
And we don't need additional budget for this?
Uh, for the most part, correct.
Okay, so then I think for, for example, the Blackberry Farm, is that, so that item number thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine? And also forty, I think they are all like half of the way? How much are they for their alone? How, what's the percentage of getting done?
Sure, I can take Blackberry Farm and the Dog Off Leash and the Strategic Plan. Joanne McGrini, Park and Rec Director. Blackberry Farm is kind of at the beginning stages, just because we've been working on several other items. But we are still working on it in the research stage as notated in the Attachment C. Dog Off Leash area, we're just, again, pursuing the interaction between the youth sports organizations to determine the success of the trial, so that's still underway. And then for the Park and Rec Strategic Plan implementation, we actually just finalized the recommendations with the Park and Rec Commission at our meeting, our special meeting last week. And so we will be moving forward with some of those immediate short-term opportunities being implemented. And that's an ongoing project for the next five years.
Yeah, because the finished date for the strategic plan is July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. So the plan will be done by then?
So the plan is from the master plan and so it's the implementation of those recommendations. So there's budget associated, so this is really a CIP project where funds have been allocated, two hundred thousand dollars annually to address park amenity improvements. So we have finished, we have done the prioritization for year one and now the implementation for year one will be underway with collaboration with Public Works.
Wait, the two hundred thousand dollars annually was just for, for small items at the parks? That I know Parks and Rec Commission has been working on. But that's only one small item of the Parks Rec or Department Strategic Plan? Because my understanding is the strategic plan would implement the entire master plan.
So this is?
Just one item, right? So.
Right.
What exactly is, I guess, could you clarify what, for this plan? What exactly is planned to be done by the end of June this year and what is planned for next year?
Right, so there, there are many things associated with this, one of which is a CIP project for implementation of park amenity improvements. And there are five years associated with that CIP project to look at different elements. Play equipment, nature play equipment, exercise equipment, inclusive elements to be upgraded at parks. And so we've done year one of that five-year project. In addition, there's another CIP project for three hundred thousand dollars for playground equipment replacement. So again, we are working on that part of the strategic plan implementation as well. There are other things like the community garden improvements or, or satellite garden locations to be identified. And so yes, this is an ongoing operational item to address the master plan and implement the short-term and immediate items that were addressed through the master plan process.
So the McQuillan Ranch Garden, the Satellite Garden, they were all CIP project last year. So then that, I'm very confused because this strategic plan doesn't include anything else except some existing projects here and there. I thought the plan means we would have a five-year plan of year of what we would implement in the next five years. But then what I hear right now is just one of here and there.
I think that.
Just our regular CIP. What's the plan there?
I think there are several things associated with the implementation of the overall plan. And so I'm trying to just identify all those different things that are happening simultaneously through the CIP and through work and collaboration with the Park and Rec Commission. So there's, you know, recommendations for full-size basketball courts to be implemented at parks, satellite gardens to be implemented at parks. And so there, it's, it's a bigger item. I, I wasn't here for this item to come on to the work program to kind of interrogate it. So that's how it's been working. It will be part of operations and CIP.
The master plan, Parks and Rec master, master plan identified maybe a thousand different items.
Correct.
And ninety percent of them probably we would never get to do. So strategic plan is very important in identifying the items that we will actually get done. So do, would we expect a plan? Will, will we see a plan of items that will, will actually get carried out?
Yes. We are working through what is in the appendices of the master plan. It's actually, there are immediate and short-term opportunities listed at every park. And so those are the things that we're going through in these first five years is to try and address what those recommendations were through, through that process.
Yeah, but then those are also recommendations very vague. So my understanding was there will be an implementation plan, the strategic plan. Would there, so there will be an actual plan that will be delivered or not?
There can be if that's what's, that's what council decides they want to see is that they wanted a plan.
Not us decide, I thought that the department has a plan to develop.
The plan is the master plan, so we're following what is in the master plan and we're working through all those recommendations.
Okay, I guess we need to clarify this off-line. It seems like the strategic plan doesn't exist and there is no plan to develop one here. And then how, how about the other items, the development accountability, where how far off we are on that?
Sure, I can speak on that one. That's item thirty-nine, again, Ben Food Director, Community Development, Development Accountability. This is actually, it's, it's a good project, but it's, it's fairly large. It has three parts to it. And I'll preface by saying that there hasn't been a lot of movement on the items because it's, it's a large project. Originally, it started out as a way to look at how we can encourage developers to move forward with their project once it's been approved. As you may recall, we have a few projects that have been approved, allow for a large timeframe for them to actually develop. So the site will remain undeveloped a little bit. And so that was a concern for both council as well as planning commission. So this sort of, this project sort of, sort of initiated as such. And then, and then there's also too is the, how do we, how do we establish some accountability in these projects and, and the, I'm sorry, how do we review and make sure there's accountability in how the city and the staff and our department review projects? So that's sort of a separate part, but kind of related as well. So the, the city's actual review and approval process for projects, development projects. And then the third part of it is, is how do we monitor development agreements and conditions of approval? And if there's any violations, how do we go about doing that? And just basically ensuring the project can move forward and that we catch them if, if there's something that's not being done right or correctly. So it's a fairly big project. We, we, we started by, what it does is also kind of links up to the community benefits discussion as well, potential incentives, those kind of things. So we, we plan on parceling out this project if it gets prioritized higher to, you will see this coming back as a multiple of study sessions, I, I believe. We, we, we plan to kind of divide this up into three different parts. The accountability of project review process, we can certainly do that. In fact, we were prepared to do that a few months ago already, so we can certainly do that. But the, the meat of it is, is how do we hold the projects accountable and how do we make sure they move forward? And that discussion has, has occurred while we started some research with developers. Also, other cities are looking at some of those development agreements in different languages and what, what counts as a benefit, community benefit to the community that you serve in. So that's a much bigger conversation and we, we plan on doing that as well. That itself potentially will require community outreach discussions. So it's, so it's a sort of comprehensive, transparent process. So like I said, we haven't gone very much in terms of the two or the three big items, but in terms of accountability for how our department review projects, we can certainly, certainly go about doing that. So if you look at this as a three-part project, I would say we're probably twenty-five percent there.
Okay, let's scroll down. We're limited in time. I'd like to at least try to get through the items with these clarified questions. So let's go through the next step from forty-two on. You have pilot for noise measurement at forty-two. And then we'll encompass forty-eight with assigned ordinance update. We have Councilmember Moore waving her hand as well as electronically, the hand is up. So why don't we go to you? And please don't go back to the prior, prior items. I just want to move us along.
Uh, except that we, we already incorporated SB nine forty-six. We did the sidewalk vendors. We already did that. And so that the part of this has already been approved under policies related to code amendments. I forgot what SB nine forty-six is. Pardon me, I looked it up just now. It's the sidewalk vendor portion. We broke it into two parts. We left the mobile vendors, the, the food truck item hanging. So we, we dealt with SB nine forty-six and incorporated it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Let's go on to the questions on items forty-two. If you don't have questions on that, I, I can come back to you later.
We shouldn't have it, we shouldn't have a work item that says incorporated us, incorporated if you already did it. It's my point, we should strike that off.
I, I heard your point. I think staff heard your point. Let's go ahead and go to the questions on items forty-two to forty-eight. If you don't have any forthcoming, I'll go to Councilmember Willie.
Are you ready for me then?
Yes, please.
So forty-two and forty-three, you know, piloting, noise measurement, pollution monitoring. But, you know, where does this fit in our city is the issue I have. And that is, you know, we, we do have a pollution concern, both air pollution and water pollution pertaining to Lehigh. I would like to see these two, forty-two and forty-three, directed at a particular item in our city that our community is concerned about, and that's Lehigh. You, you know, to not have these tied to something essentially leaves it more like a, a science project. What are you going to do with it once you've done that? Whereas I think we need to hit the, hit the ground running and say, implement pollution monitoring, both air and water around Lehigh so that we in fact have our own monitoring going on. So, so that's my comment on that, forty-two and forty-three.
Okay, uh, do you have a question associated with that? Do you want staff to answer whether they have particular items or areas that they would want to monitor?
They're, they're more than welcome to as it's worded here, you know?
Okay, I see, I see Bill with his camera on and his microphone unmuted. Did you want to speak to that?
Yes, Mayor, thank you and thank you very much for the question, Councilmember Willie. So what we're doing, let's start with pollution monitoring. What we are doing is IT along with sustainability. We're working with Andre Durfort. What we're doing there is we're buying a package that gives us baseline data for the last year, block by block, for pollution in particulate level. So what that tells us is where the pollution and the particulate level issues are today. So that is what we will utilize to place future sensors out. So right now, it's just a guess. I mean, we could put them out by Lehigh, but with wind blowing and stuff like that, it actually may not be directly at Lehigh. It may be downstream from Lehigh. So this block by block data will tell us where the pollution issues currently are and where we need to place our monitors. The other one on noise measurements, we'll be glad to put that wherever you think that we could utilize it. Our, our thought was we would put it around construction sites and look at decibel levels for those people that may be exceeding the decibel levels that's required by the city. And if that happens, then we will notify the code enforcement folks and they could take specific action. I hope that answers your question.
Well, it, it's informative, it's informative, but I, I would, you know, I think it's, you know, it sounds interesting. But again, I, I think my focus is truly, you know, putting our resources where, you know, it's going to be most beneficial to the residents and their current concerns. And to me, you know, Lehigh is, is the, the elephant in the room and, and we don't have something going on for Lehigh. And I, I just see this as a place where we have something, we've got seventy thousand dollars worth of budget. We've got two small tasks which could be combined to a medium task and put that toward that location where we could then use that to directly update our community on, on those levels. Right now, we wind up with a, a lot of data that comes from RODA, but it's not data that we take in ourselves so that we can go to the county and say, hey, there's a problem. So I, I, I would just really like to see it focused on the most important area of the. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. We have Councilmember Moore with her hand up.
Yes, so I, I see that the ERC is mentioned here. I actually had made an effort to try to expand the role of the Environmental Review Committee so that we could look into issues such as Lehigh. So I'm a little curious about doing pollution monitoring around there. And I would like to expand that, I, I love the idea of having noise measurement around construction sites, but I'd also like the air quality monitoring too, portable monitoring as well. I think that would be, that would be great there.
Okay, great. Thank you for the comment. Our next questions are from Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, so. So for item forty-five, for residential and the mixed-use design standards, and I think we have requests from the public to consider R1 zoning for balcony size and the location and also privacy screening, since the setback is shorter than we, we can, we can decide a lot, a lot of times. So maybe we need to reconsider the tree selection for privacy screening also. So can we include those in this item?
Uh, I, Ben Food Director, Convailment, Mayor, if you, if you don't mind me responding to Vice Mayor Chow's question. So this project, residential mixed-use design standards has started already underway. We've, we've identified a consultant to come aboard and you will see some budgetary adjustments to accommodate that. I think some of those items that Vice Mayor Chow you mentioned as well, the public had mentioned, were on previous work program, uh, work programs in previous years. They have since been taken off or not prioritized for the current year. Though the items that you mentioned are fairly large projects. So although certainly not an issue to, to Adam, I would just caution, so the expectations be able to complete that this year and also so the appropriateness of merging two together. I think it makes this, this one item a much longer time project, longer term project.
So what's included in the residential standard right now? It does say that it include the adequate buffers between properties, right?
Yeah, so, so the idea, the idea is.
What is included in the current?
Yeah, so the idea is to, to have, so the objective design standards that you see in some other cities will have design standards or criteria for whether it's residential or mixed-use projects. And, and part of that design standards will have a variety of different ways to ensure that there's adequate transition from non-residential to residential and vice versa. So that could include, of course, buffers as well.
So wouldn't the privacy screening be already included and?
No, not necessarily. I mean, you could include that, but a privacy screening, you're, you're, for the most part, you're, you're looking at single-family homes in a single-family district from, from a single-family home to a single-family home. If you're looking at much larger scope and transition from mixed-use district to a residential district or vice versa, that is a, a little bit different.
Oh, you mean this item doesn't include, include a single-family home? It's a transition from mixed-use, commercial or multifamily residential to single-family home?
So initially when this came on, came on board, what, there was a lot of concerns about, um, sort of larger development and projects and how they will butt up against residential, uh, districts and smaller homes, lower density projects and how, how you provide that transition and that buffer. Um, so if, if the council wishes to incorporate some of the other details, we can certainly do that. Now, in this, in the process of doing this project, it may be, uh, we just could have started with the consultant. It may be that we will have very distinctive and separate residential versus mixed-use, uh, guidelines or we have one combined. We're kind of early in the game to, to, to see that right now. But if that's a desire from the council to incorporate some of those residential, single-family district, uh, uh, methods to buffer them, we can certainly, uh, add them in there and see how we can develop that in this process. And if not, we, we'll come back for, for updates and, and let you know what the process has been and how we can deal with these things.
Okay, let's, uh, let's go on to, um, our next, uh, set of items. So that would be from forty-nine on. And I'll note that we have about ten minutes left here, uh, before midnight before I'm, I'm either going to adjourn this or continue it. Um, so I, I would like to allocate about five minutes for, uh, a brief discussion on, um, the best way of moving forward. Um, I, I, I'm not going to malign the questions here. I think they're very good ones and we've had some, uh, excellent engagement with our staff with regard to some of the details here. Um, but I do think that, you know, follow-ups are, uh, kind of open as to how we go about, uh, with the next steps of this, uh, this prioritization. Uh, perhaps we end up having some follow-ups, uh, based upon our discussion tonight in terms of, um, putting a little bit more, uh, information and nuance into the items here. But let's, let's take a look at forty-nine through fifty-five here. Uh, with fifty-five ending with catalytic converter and general theft of vehicular, uh, burglaries. Forty-nine starts on a study session on regulating diversified retail use. And we have Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is still up.
No.
Did, did, okay, so that's artificial. So, uh, council member Wei, you're...
Uh, so I just have one minor question on the forty-nine. Um, could that be collaboration with the Chamber? Because the Chamber, you know, business would probably know better. Uh, so I would think that'd be nice to collaborate with them. The next thing I'm just going to comment, if I can't, if I don't have questions answered, I can always email, right? I can email, uh, staff and get answers from the questions I would like to ask.
Uh, city manager's head is nodding, so I, we'll, we'll, we'll take that as a yes, please do.
Sure, sorry.
Well, and it's also codified. I, you know, I, I like to reiterate this every now and then. We're, we're free to ask informational questions. Uh, and, and, and that's, that's explicitly stated in our municipal code of, of staff members of the city. Um, so, uh, Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, I'd like to add that for item fifteen, uh, revisit five G standard. Uh, under commission, it should be planning or taken planning because what we are talking about is really put location of the, of the site.
Uh, uh, Bill has his camera on and, uh, microphone unmuted. Did you want to weigh in on that?
Sure, Mayor. A- actually, that was a recommendation by the TIC, uh, commission, but if you notice across from that, um, uh, I think the city manager is going to be having a workshop on this. So that's why it's no longer on our list of things that we're moving forward with as a TIC commission. City manager is taking over this as a, um, item that's going to be a study session.
Um, then I think we, I think we have requested that this will not, uh, we, we will need, uh, to see a council, uh, ordinance on this issue. Um, in addition likely, likely in addition to the study session. So I think this item should stay on, uh, whether it's TIC or council item.
Okay, let, let's, uh, confine this to questions, especially given the...
Yeah, okay.
The lateness of the time. Um, council, do you have any other questions on these items, council, uh, Vice Mayor Chow?
No.
Okay, uh, council member Willie, uh, questions, please, clarifying questions.
Yeah, I, I wish I could follow that, you know, the way this is described. But five G is so important to our community. There is so much concern. We need a, uh, work plan item on five G that addresses the resident concerns. Um, you know, they're individually, they're not able to make any progress in, um, dealing with the cell providers, but collectively with our help, I believe they could. And so we need a work plan item. Uh, I won't, it's late. I won't go more into it tonight, but we need that.
Okay, thank you, council member Willie. Uh, all right, let, let's go on to items fifty-six through fifty-nine. And council member Wei, I'm, I'm assuming that your hand is just still up from your prior questions. Okay, uh, so this is our last tranche from CUSD collaboration field space to, uh, fiber net internet implementation. Are there any questions about these four items? We have council member Wei with, uh, questions here.
I have one curvy, sorry, clarification questions. On number fifty-seven, the Jollyman Park, um, all-inclusive playground, that is in progress, right? It's, it's, we have the budget and it's ready to go. We have the county money and so...
Not quite. So we do have the county funding and that county funding grant when we applied for designated Jollyman as the park. So the location is there. The issue is that we needed to fundraise the remaining, um, dollars. And in COVID, it's super difficult to do a fundraising for, um, you know, a, uh, playground and outdoor equipment. So we will, um, maybe Roger can chime in on when he's planning to restart that, but, um, that's the stage we are currently in. And so that's why it's on this city work program again.
Yeah, we, we were able to renegotiate the, uh, donation agreement with the county and extend the agreement out. Um, we've reduced the scope of the project, uh, but yet maintained all of the, um, one point four four eight million dollars of funding. And, uh, but it still does require, as the city manager mentioned, one million dollars of, uh, of fundraising. And, uh, as soon as, um, you know, the environment allows us to start that process, that's what we'll be doing. And we'll be coming to council with that.
Uh, council member Moore.
Um, thank you, Roger. I, I was wondering if I heard you right. You, you secured one point four four eight million in, in grant money and you need one million in fundraising. So we're talking, uh, like a two, two point four million dollar project down from, it was around five million?
Uh, ca- council has already authorized one point two million. So if you take the one point two, add the one point four eight eight and then the one million, that, that'll get you into the scope of the project.
Okay, okay. So this is not, it's not terribly scaled back from what, what we had seen.
It'll, it'll still include all the, all the elements that make it an all-inclusive playground.
Three and a half, four. Okay, all right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Chow.
So for the all-inclusive playground, if we, is there a deadline? Because this was not in the staff's list, so I'm just wondering, um, is there a reason we are not recommending proceeding? Or is there a deadline? Can we wait?
Well, as I mentioned, we, uh, as part of the donation agreement amendment, um, two, two more years were added to the, um, three-year, uh, donation agreement. So we, we have time and the county was understanding of, of COVID and the challenges that, that we have.
Okay, so we could possibly postpone the years for a better, uh, fundraising.
But, yeah, that was, that was the idea to have that flexibility.
Okay. And then the long-term strategic plan, I noticed that there was a, another strategic plan. So this is, uh, there, there is a long-term one. Anyway, never mind. So, uh, I, item, am I beyond? Fifty-nine, this item fiber internet implementation. I was happy to see that. However, I see it's proposed by the TIC commission. Just wondering, how come the TIC commission is proposing this? Not TIC.
The TIC commission came forward with this idea. What this idea is, is to work with the carriers, the internet service providers to provide fiber into each home. Excuse me. Now, the city has attempted to do this in the past. You may remember AT&T was doing fiber into the home with Google, but that ceased when there was, uh, when Google dropped out of the race. Uh, we can continue working with them, but the reality is, uh, most of these vendors are moving to five G to provide that, uh, last bit of connectivity and increase speed.
So, yeah, I, I, I think using fiber is better, but right now it's the TIC commission that's interested. So was, why would they get anywhere? If, 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 if your department couldn't make progress?
I think the TIC commission just made the recommendation and again, we're putting forward everything that the commissions put forward. And this was the, uh, TIC commission request.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we're, we're right up at midnight at this point. I, I want to close out the questions. Um, last week I did receive, um, I, I, I did receive, uh, an inquiry from, uh, Congressman Ro Khanna's office about, um, potential projects proposed by the city of Cupertino that might qualify for some of their community grant funding. Um, I, uh, spoke with Representative from his office today to get a little bit more detail with regard to what the parameters are. Um, we're looking at, um, and I spoke with Tom Pike and, and he informed me to try to keep it, uh, within about a million that would have more broad-based community impact. And so what I'm hearing, uh, about the Jollyman, um, all-inclusive playground, um, but I'm also, also, uh, hearing, I think, as other members of the public and council have been hearing, are, um, at, at least some, some requests for perhaps keeping an open mind about where we locate this. But nonetheless, with regard to the funding element of it, it does seem like this is very ripe. Um, this is a very fast-moving, uh, set of, uh, requests. Um, so the congressional office, uh, which spans six cities, is going to have, uh, ten projects that it can, uh, forward to the appropriations committee. They're asking that we provide, uh, our applications by April second, which is Friday. Um, so I, I, I just wanted to put that forward to our staff that's assembled here because there could be in fact multiple, um, mul- multiple projects such as one of our affordable housing, you know, um, developments. Um, you know, something, uh, having to do with other items that we have in our work plan that could be potentially, you know, asking for funding. So I want to make that awareness available, uh, to everyone. Uh, it's fairly unique. You have a united Congress now, uh, that, that could, you know, potentially pass these budget earmarks. So this is a new introduction. It was fairly fast as well. Um, Congressman Khanna's, uh, office heard about it relatively later on the nineteenth and then the following Tuesday after that Friday, that's when that information was conveyed to us. So, um, you, you know, with that, I would like to, uh, poll my council as to what the preference would be. Would you rather that we adjourn this meeting now and then, uh, notice, uh, another one? Or, or would you rather that we, uh, continue this, uh, such that we, uh, effectively continue our conversation tonight? And I think we would pick it up with, um, the idea of whether we wanted to add any items. Um, I, I, I don't see us in a position right now where we're ready to, uh, prioritize everything, but I think we've gotten a lot of good questions, uh, in clarification and understanding of what these fifty-nine are. Um, if we do, uh, irrespective of whether it's a, uh, continuation of tonight or whether i- it's an adjournment and another meeting, I, I would like to have our follow-up meeting within the next couple of weeks, uh, given the timetable of what we're looking at here. So, um, let me, let me just poll council, um, i- if that's fine. Um, council member, um, council member Moore, do you have a preference as to whether we adjourn? And actually, let me, let me hold off on that. Um, city attorney Minera, I noticed your camera's on. Do you have input on that, uh, with regard to, um, the logistics of how we continue this or adjourn and, uh, notice another meeting?
I, I would recommend that you adjourn the special meeting to a date and time specified and then continue the study session item at that adjourned meeting.
I see what you're saying. So, so, so both adjourn and continue is what it's... Okay, um, and, and do we need to identify dates certain right now or is it...
That would be preferable, um, to do so.
Okay, so let me, let me propose two Tuesdays from now, two weeks from today, since next Tuesday is going to be, um, a council meeting. Uh, and so that would, that would put us on April thirteenth. Madam City Manager, do we have anything, uh, scheduled for that, uh, Tuesday?
I am looking. The only hesitation I had was that we were trying to schedule it one time. I actually think the thirteenth at this point would work and will... Let me check in with, um, Katie and maybe Ben. I just remem- don't remember the dates by which we were trying to schedule the Rena's housing element study sessions, but I think those are later in April. So the thirteenth should work.
Okay.
Katie, do you have any?
I'll, I'll defer to Ben on the Rena scheduling, but, um, there, the only thing I am seeing is that they're applying commission meeting that evening, but...
Right.
That's the only thing I was going to say is playing commission, uh, meeting that evening.
Right, right. So, so perhaps, um, the following evening on the, on the fourteenth instead of the thirteenth, um, would, would make sense.
That's your meet, well, that's from five to six, that's your meeting with the commissioners.
Good point. Is, so second Wednesday, right?
Yeah, we could try, um...
We could try the twelfth on the Monday night if that's something that would work with people.
I am getting some feedback that, um, that the thirteenth would work. Is the planning commission meeting still happening that day or maybe it's not?
It's a regularly scheduled meeting. I, I have to look to see if we actually have items, but I don't...
Well, well, actually, um, speaking of the fourteenth, uh, Deb...
Yeah.
The, the meeting with the commissioners, commissioners only from five to six, so...
That's right, yeah, that's...
We could start the meeting, um, on the same, uh, at the same time.
We could do that.
Yeah, six thirty is tonight. So, so let me, let me poll council to see if that would work. Um, with the fourteenth of, of April work, that's, uh, uh, two weeks and a day out, or actually...
You mean the thirteenth or the fourteenth?
The fourteenth, that's Wednesday. It's technically two weeks out, right? So, um...
Wednesday, there is a, one of us has a meeting. There is a Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board Directors Meeting. I think John has a meeting then, at seven.
Okay, so we have a conflicting meeting. Um, so we're not going to be able to, uh, meet as council, which we should. How about, um, how about we move this back to, um, Monday, see if that's possible? Uh, that would be, that would be the twelfth. Same time, six thirty? Is that, is that workable? I'm seeing nods, seeing nods from, actually, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, does that work for your schedule? Yes, it does? Okay, let, then let's do this. Uh, we will adjourn this meeting and continue this item number two, uh, to the date certain of, uh, April twelfth at six thirty PM. So thank you very much. Uh, much appreciation to, uh, the public and staff, um, for, for our discussion tonight. And, and I would just say before adjourning this, um, I, I hope staff can take some of the feedback from council because some of it seemed to be quite useful, especially insofar, uh, as, you know, preclusion, uh, is concerned, right? I mean, i- if an item is going to go forward nonetheless, then maybe, you know, marking that, um, budgetary items, other informational, um, you know...
We'll take the feedback and incorporate as much as possible.
Uh, greatly appreciated. Um, thank you very much. Um, Madam City Attorney, did you want to say something with regard to...
I'm just wondering if our city clerk would like a motion for the adjournment and a vote on that.
Okay, um, Kirsten, did you want a, a motion to adjourn to April twelfth?
Sure, please, thank you.
Okay, well, anyone bring that motion, April twelfth at six thirty PM?
Moved.
All right, a second?
Second.
All right, uh, council member Wei motions and council member Willie seconds. Uh, Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct a roll call vote.
Council member Moore?
Aye.
Council member Wei?
Aye.
Council member Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Uh, have a great evening and we're adjourned on this special meeting until April twelfth. Thank you very much. Uh, have a great evening and we're adjourned on this special meeting until April twelfth.